You're allowed, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, everybody. We first have a bit of housekeeping from the meeting that just immediately preceded this event. And if you stay with us, we will move forward with tonight's business. But first, we are going to reconvene the City Council adjourned regular meeting Tuesday, February 4, 2025, that began at 3:30 PM. And I'd like to turn it to our city attorney for an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. As previously announced, at 3:30, the City Council went into closed session, discussed items identified on the agenda. The council gave direction with respect to items 1A and 1B. There was no other reportable action taken.
Thank you. And now I'd like to call to order our City Council regular meeting of Tuesday, February 4, 2025. And at this point, I'd like to turn to our city clerk for an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Lieutenant, we received a request from Mayor Haworth to attend the meeting remotely for due cause. And Mayor Haworth has an additional statement to make.
Yes, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Hello, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not there in person, but you can probably hear. Late yesterday, I began to feel congested. A test for COVID is negative, and I don't have a fever, but I was more ill today, and I'm not able well enough to attend this meeting. So I request an AB 2449 notice to request to participate remotely in the meeting on an emergency basis for just cause. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now pursue proceed to our pledge to the flag and invite down Dylan Black of the Manhattan Beach Middle School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a moment. We'd like to bring down the head of the middle school, Mr. Alyssyek. And I'm not sure if I got the name correctly. But please, why don't you explain to us why Dylan is here tonight? Thank you, Dylan.
Absolutely. Thank you. Dylan Black is the elected student body president at Manhattan Beach Middle School. He has served in absolutely. Let's get Dylan around. Dylan has served on our ASB for the past two years, acting as the elected student body secretary in his seventh grade year before being elected to the role of president in his current eighth grade year. Dylan has been an incredible asset to our ASB over the last two years. His passion for projects and making the school a better place are unmatched. He is willing to take risks when designing projects for ASB, which fosters creativity within his teams. Dylan is also a strong student mentor, often coaching younger ASB students, especially those interested in running for office at the end of the year. Over the last two years, Dylan has shown incredible growth. He is confident and thriving as an eighth grader. He is reflective and passionate in his classes and with his friends. A personal memory that I have of Dylan is when he joined me onstage for our September 11th remembrance ceremony. Dylan's speech to the student body was moving and incorporated the values of our school, our community, and our country. Everyone at MBMS is incredibly proud of him and all that he has accomplished. Thank you, Dylan, for all that you have done over the past three years, and we are all excited to see what is in store for you as you transfer to high school next year.
Dylan, thank you for offering and leading us in the pledge. Is there anybody here tonight that you would like to acknowledge beyond your head of school?
My sister and my mom are here.
Want to point them out? So on behalf of the City Council, colleagues, I wanted to present you with a certificate for leading us in our pledge and also a city pin. Hold on one sec. We're going to maybe get a picture with my colleagues. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Here.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lesser?
Here.
Mayor Haworth?
Here.
Okay, we now proceed to our ceremonial calendar. And the first item is a presentation of a certificate of recognition to Tom Moffett for his outstanding dedication and commitment in preserving his late father Pete Moffett's legacy of the annual Skechers fireworks show in Manhattan Beach. Tom, are you here? There's a crowd. There he is. Fantastic. Thank you. So there's not a prepared script tonight. Really, it's to acknowledge how we've come to have our fireworks display, which all of us enjoy in our community. Many of us have lived in the community and can remember when this was maybe just a smaller event. It was started by Tom's late father Pete, among other businessmen, as just a thank you to our community. But it's grown into something much, much more. It is impactful for our entire region. It's a free, open event to really celebrate the holidays and means a tremendous amount. And it should be noted that Tom has carried on this legacy as would you call yourself a producer?
Sure, we'll go with that.
Why don't you give us a little bit of a background and just know that we all are just tremendously grateful for what you've kept on.
Sure. This thing is an emotional event for me because I've attended it ever since I was eight years old. Now, 43. Unfortunately, I lost my father about two and a half years ago. So it was an incredible honor to step in and take over for a show that I've gone through ever since as a kid. But it's also the heart of the show is giving back to the community. And really, just want to thank Richard Montgomery because it wouldn't happen without him, especially the city, Matt Saboski of the Police Department, and everyone from Parks and Rec and Fire and all, and especially from the City Council and support, and our sponsors Skechers, L.A. Car Guy, Chevron. I can go on and on and on. But really, the heart of the event is to give back to the community. If you've been to the event, I hope that you feel that, that it really is a thank you to the people of Manhattan Beach, and that it's open, and that it's free, safe to bring the family. And we hope that it goes on for another 40 years from there. So it's been just an incredible honor the last three years to step in in my father's shoes and just try to take over for him and continue the legacy that this event means for the city.
So I didn't prepare you, but is there a date set for the fireworks display in December? Did you send those or planning ahead?
Well, I can look at my calendar, but just to put in your mind, it is always on the second Sunday in December. So this so last year in 2024 is December 8. It was earliest it could ever be because December 1 fell on a Sunday. So always just look in your calendars. It's always put on the second Sunday in December. So wherever that date falls, I don't have my calendar open right now. I think it's the 14th. But it's always the second Sunday in December. It's just an easy way to remember and keep everyone on the same page.
Thank you. And I know you are supported by others, including our former colleague, Councilmember Richard Montgomery and others. Thank you. Thank you to all. We have a certificate for you. On behalf of the city, my council, my colleagues, thank you. Thank you for this enduring legacy of your father. And? A city pin.
Thank you so much.
Hold on just a second. We'll get a picture.
December 14.
December 14.
I remember the 14.
Why don't we put you?
Oh, no. Where there it is.
I'm ready for the photo.
Okay. Next, we will move on to the second ceremony item, which is a presentation of 2024 recognition awards for our longstanding local businesses. Please bear with us. There are a number of people here for this item, but I believe through the city manager, I believe I'm starting with our finance director, Onyx Jones. Is that right? Do you introduce the item? Or who would you like to introduce the item? Libby?
Hello. Stepping in for Onyx right now, Libby Bretower, Financial Services Manager. And I'm happy to introduce our Revenue Services Supervisor, Emmy Rose Hannah.
Thank you, Libby, for that introduction.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Haworth, Mayor Pro Tem Lesser, and members of City Council. My name is Emmy Rose Hannah. I'm the Revenue Services Supervisor, as Libby mentioned, and I have the pleasure of presenting the 2024 Long Standing Local Business Awards this evening. So each year, we get to celebrate and recognize our local longstanding businesses that have continued to serve our special community here in Manhattan Beach over the last five to 50 years. Over the years, the program has evolved and has grown substantially. Based on City Council direction, the award program recognizes a total of eight incremental milestones, as illustrated on this slide. And collectively, these eight milestones mean that we get to recognize 166 businesses for this past year on their milestone achievements. I will add that this is the highest overall volume of awards that we've recognized to date in the history of the award program. So there's a lot to celebrate, as reflected with our crowd this evening. So with that, I'll dive right into our award presentation. So as we start, our first category, we recognize businesses that have been operating for the last five years here in Manhattan Beach. They've been operating since 2019, so just before the pandemic. And we have 53 businesses being recognized, which will have be presented with a special certificate award, as illustrated on the slide here. So these certificates will be mailed to all recipients, all award recipients, following this ceremony. So we have our first 26 awards displayed here, and then the remaining awards through 53 displayed here. So we commend these businesses. Moving forward, we recognize our 10-year category, in which these businesses have been operating since 2014. We have 22 businesses that will be presented with a special recognition award, as displayed on the top right corner of the slide. All these 22 businesses will also have their recognition awards mailed to them as well. And then moving into our 15-year category, we have 27 businesses recognized this year, which will be presented with a recognition award as well. And these businesses have remained in business since 2009. And so with that, at this time, I'd like to transition the presentation and hand this over to Mayor Pro Tem Lesser for a few words before we begin presenting the plaque awards to all of our 20 through 50-year award recipients this evening.
Great. Thank you, Emmy. Thank you to all of those that are here tonight on behalf of your businesses. We depend on you to help support our community. It's one thing to know the the business cycle where there's ups and downs, but particularly over the last five years, there's been really challenges with the pandemic, with inflation, with so many challenges, and yet you're still here. Thank you for being here. Tonight, we're going to be honoring 64 businesses that have been operating in the city for 20 to 50 dedicated years and present them with a special plaque award. Many of these businesses are here with us today to accept the award in person. I'm going to need a little help from my council colleagues to help pass out all of the plaques. Here's how we're going to proceed. We're going to be presenting each milestone year and then inviting those in attendance to receive the plaque on behalf of your business. We'll be reading the name of each business. And as you hear your name, please come down to the dais, collect your plaque award, and stand nearby because we're going to get a group picture. We're going to get a group picture of those in your group. But before we start, I wanted to turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Sherillian, who is our city's former finance director.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And again, congratulations to all the businesses. 166 total businesses being recognized is the largest group that we've ever had since we changed the program about five years ago, recognized from various milestones. So congratulations to you all. You're definitely a landscape of our community. I also wanted to just recognize the finance team that that put this together. It takes a long time verifying and ordering the plaques. You know, I wanted to recognize their efforts tonight. Some of them are their names, you know, Josh Grady and Tori Guerrero and John Albee in Revenue Services, as well as Emmy Rose and Libby Bretower. It's a long effort. It takes about four or five months. I just want to recognize those guys. Thank you.
So any other further comments from my colleagues from the mayor before we begin? All right, let's go. And I'll turn it back over to Emmy to read the list.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem Lesser and Councilmember Sherillian, for your introduction and your thoughtful words. As we begin, we'll be recognizing the 20-year category, which will be presented with a special silver plaque award, as illustrated on the slide. And this year, we'll be recognizing 22 businesses, which have been in operation since 2004. So we'll begin. So our first is Bank of California. We also have Bar Tosick and Telford, Bond and Associates, Boyd's Limousine Service Incorporated, City Bank, El Gringo Manhattan, First Manhattan Mortgage, Harris and Associates, John R. Miller DDS, Journey of Faith School, Catwalk, Lido D. Manhattan, we have Manhattan Beach Dental Aesthetics, Ortho Mattress, Patricia J. Panucci, Residence Inn Manhattan Beach, Riley Arts, Sephora, we have Skechers, the corporate office on Sepulveda, Sylvia Gayad Accountancy Corporation, Comic Buzz.
Emmy, we have a supply chain issue here. Maybe we'll have you slow down just a minute so we can catch up.
Certainly.
Sick or Telford? Boyd's Limousine Service? Riley Arts. Hello, Kim.
Bond and Associates.
Oh, hi. El Gringo. Thank you. You should never leave this to the politicians to organize. You see why we depend on city staff? Sylvia.
I don't have any of the honors here.
Sylvia is right here. Sylvia. Nice.
City Bank.
Harris.
Go ahead and continue.
So at this time, we'll take a few moments for a group photo. If you could all have everyone look this way, analysts, this will be able to take a photo of our 20-year 20-year award. Riley.
The plaques are not aligning with the names that you indicated.
You guys are really making me feel missed.
All right. Is anybody?
All right. Thank you, everyone. So moving forward, we would like to recognize. Thank you. So moving forward, we would like to recognize our 25-year milestone awards, which have been in operation since 1999. And tonight, we have 17 businesses that will be presented with a special gold plaque, as illustrated on the slide. So with that, we'll go ahead and begin. Our first award is Barnes &amp; Noble, D. Mitch Concrete Company, E. Escrows Incorporated, Il Fornal, Jennifer M. Honey Law Offices, Jiffy Lupe, JWM CPA and Company, Lasserelle Salon, Manhattan Auto Center, Mud Honey, we have Old Navy, REI, Reich Design Incorporated, Supercut, Beehive, we have Trader Joe's with us, and West Coast Orthopedic Surgery Medicine. You can join us. And as we take some time to distribute the plaques, we'll gather around for a photo with everyone.
For your patience.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So as we move forward, we'd like to recognize our 30-year category. So we have businesses that have been operating since 1994. There are 10 businesses that will be presented with a special bronze plaque award. And those businesses are California Pizza Kitchen, California Tanning Salons Incorporated, Equity Management Company, Johnny Rockets, Oceanographic Teaching Station Incorporated, Studio K Designs, The Coffee Bean Tea &amp; Lee, Tomorrow Architecture Incorporated, Victoria Secret, and West Coast Center for Orthopedic Surgery. If you could all gather round for a few moments as we take a photo. All right. Thank you so much. So second to last category, I will add, we are recognizing our 40-year milestone awards. This year, we're recognizing 10 businesses that have been in operation since 1984, and they'll be presented with a special silver plaque award, as illustrated on the slide. And those businesses are Barney M. Home DDS, Chang's Acupuncture Clinic, El Sombrero Number Two, J. Stevenson AIA, Magic Rainbow Preschool, Manhattan Beach, Michael J. Divine and Associates Incorporated, Oceanside Camera Repair, Olympic Cleaners, and Ruby F. Credito. All right. We've made it to our last milestone award category. Thank you, everyone in attendance this evening. We'd like to take some time to recognize our special businesses that have been in operation for the last 50 years, which is a huge milestone. And these businesses have been operating since 1974. And tonight, we'll be presenting them with a special gold plaque award, as illustrated on the slide. And those businesses are Asian Arts, Otto Meister, Gary M. Lazarus OD PhD Incorporated, Shellback Tavern, and West Coast Land Co. Incorporated. So we would like to congratulate everyone again that was in attendance this evening. For those businesses that could not make it, I will add that we invite them to stop by the Finance Department at City Hall. So all those plaques you see back there will ensure all the businesses do receive their award. And thank you again for your time and attendance this award ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you again for all those that came down. Thank you for city staff for organizing all this. To continue with our council agenda, we will next move on to an approval of the agenda and waiver of the full reading of ordinances. And this would be an opportunity to indicate if you plan to pull an item from the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Actually, we need to take voice vote motions because the mayor is participating remotely. I see a motion. Do I hear a motion? Yes.
Well, have there been polled from the consent calendar?
Why don't I entertain an indication from colleagues as to which items any council member would like to poll tonight?
Your Honor, I'm not pulling an item, but I wanted to register a no vote for our Your honor, I'm not pulling an item, but I wanted to register a no vote for item number six. I'm not pulling it just for the public record.
Okay. We'll have enough to... Any items to be pulled by any of your colleagues? If not, I would like to poll item number five and item number eight.
So, I move approval to consent agenda with the exceptions of five and eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Which case? Call for a vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Hoerth?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ternay?
Yes.
Great.
Motion passes 5-0.
We'll now move on to city council and community organization announcements of upcoming events for up to one minute per person. Are there any individuals who would like to make a community announcement? Please, hello, Josh.
Hello. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to invite the adults and teens of the community to come to the library this Saturday, February 8, at 2:00 p.m. to celebrate African-American and Black History Month with a fascinating talk about slave folk tales by a local historian, Dr. Anthony Lee, followed by an engaging poetry reading by Miracosta High School students. Again, this event will take place at the library this Saturday at 2:00 p.m. and I thank you for your time.
Great.
Honorable mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, city officials, Mr. Lee. My name is Bobby Bell. I'm the educational rep for WM. Just a reminder, one of the services that we do offer for commercial businesses, restaurants, multifamilies, and for residents is happy to come to your business, your resident, and train you on proper diversion of the three ways streets. One of the big ones that we're dealing with right now is plastic bags, people filling up their recycling in plastic bags and throwing it into the recycle. That's not allowed. We don't want that. That's most of the contamination notices I get. So, anything that goes in the recycling, if we can just keep it out of plastic bags, that would be great. That's all I got. Wishing you guys all a blessed evening.
Very good. Great. Thank you. Is there any other member in council, member of the public in the council chamber who'd like to make a public comment? Sorry, excuse me. A community announcement. Thank you. It's been a while. If not, on Zoom, is there any member of the public? I will get to council member and mayor comments in just a moment. Anyone on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
In which case, I believe the mayor may want to make a community organization announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. First of all, thank you for running the meeting. I know it's difficult when one of us is on Zoom. I really appreciate that. But I wanted to just make a comment about an event that I attended as well as council members Nina Ternay and Joe Franklin this weekend. It was organized by a group of women, and perhaps a man, in Manhattan Beach. And they called themselves the Palli South Community with the word unity sort of highlighted. And they brought together hundreds of people at somebody's house as sort of a social gathering to get for folks that maybe were displaced from the Palisades to meet people from Manhattan Beach, to be together with each other. Monsignor Berry spoke. The high school principal, Premier Costa, spoke. And what I wanted to share, first of all, I plan on recognizing these people who organized this in like eight days at a future council meeting. But I want to share something that I heard from so many of the displaced families. And I want our community to know this and to be proud of this because they were so grateful and impressed with both the school district and American martyrs because they could not find schools for their kids. Beverly Hills either turned them down or wouldn't return their calls. I was told, also Gundo, I was told, other public schools, many, you know, most private schools are saying, no, no, no. And they said, when they called MBUSD, they said, of course. When do you want to come? When can we give you a tour? We'll pair you up with a buddy. They were so welcoming. And American martyrs, of course, did the same thing. And I, first of all, I found it extraordinary that others didn't avail themselves. It was not surprising to me that we did. But I think it's something that we should note and be very proud of and hold up because it turns out that not everybody's as open-hearted as we can be. So, I just wanted to share that with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues have a community organization or announcement?
I would just like to add to that, mayor, that the team that put on the Palli event put together this really great resource guide. I mean, it's many pages in small type, but still, it's all got different categories. And it's been a real, you know, it's been very helpful for the people who had to relocate to our community. So, many of the businesses that we just had today, I'm happy to report, are on this list. So, thank you to the group that put it together. And thanks again for all of you for welcoming these families into Manhattan Beach.
Very good. Colleagues? Anyone else? Okay. If not, we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for speakers to provide public comments of up to three minutes on any matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, including items that are on the agenda. If someone would like to speak on an item that's on a later agenda, we would just note that this is your opportunity to speak, and then you won't be given another chance when the item's called. So, please, come on down.
Hi. We're Girl Scouts from Manhattan Beach Troop 4825, working on our Silver Award project. Like many others in our community, we feel drawn to help our neighbors during this time of immense need. We're organizing a community effort to help families that lost their homes in the recent fires and are relocating to the Manhattan Beach area. We would like to help families take care of their day-to-day needs. Specifically, we are arranging meal delivery for new families and providing free mothers' helper and babysitting services.
An important part of our Silver Award project is to identify a need in our community and then to work with the community to meet that need. We want to weave the new families into the fabric of our Manhattan Beach community by asking existing Manhattan Beach residents to sign up to provide meals for our new neighbors. We are here tonight to get out the word about our project in hopes that people will help us provide these meals and spread the word to help families in need of our services.
We've drafted two flyers for different reasons. The first flyer is for anyone who would like to sign up to receive our services. Families in need of services can sign this QR code and on screen and fill out the form to indicate how we can help. Or they can email us directly at mbtroop4825@gmail.com, no capitals, no spaces.
We also have a second flyer that provides a link for local families to volunteer, to volunteer to bring meals for our new neighbors. This QR code will take, will take you, will take you to a Google sheet where you can find the meal train links or sign up to a contacted, to be contacted when more meal trains links become available.
Would one of you want to repeat the email address one more time if anybody is interested for more information? Please.
MBtroop4825@gmail.com, no capitals and no spaces.
Thank you. And well done, Girl Scouts. Terrific, terrific services to provide. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, council members. Stefan Kumpa here. Yes, great job, Girl Scouts. Two items on the consent calendar. I made some comments on the e-comment. The first one is agenda number nine. I noticed that it's an increase of $611,090. And then it said, no budget impact. And I had to scratch my head on that. Obviously, that money's got to come from somewhere. You know, if the total, if we're moving funds from another location, we may not have a total fund or budget impact, but something is going to be impacted. It means that funds are not going to be available for something else. So, when we see no budget impact, it means that we should have zero impact overall. But otherwise, it deserves an explanation. We've been talking about big-dollar items, much less than $600,000 in this meeting, in these past meetings. And it's been a real hot button. This one's 600. We should talk about it. The other one is item number 10. We talked about this. This is the trash enclosures. In the last meeting, it occurred to me after the discussion, after a public comment, is that we're going to have the same problem after we do the temporary solution. And I didn't hear that discussed in the meeting. And I encourage the council to talk about that because if we do a temporary solution, we may figure out how to solve it, but we may have the same problem again. I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. And is that a part of a discussion as we go forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in council chamber who would like to make a public comment of up to three minutes? Please.
Mayor Hoerth, I hope that you feel better and have a speedy recovery. And city council. My name is Fred Taylor. I'm a 49-year resident of Manhattan Beach. And I'm here to talk about the Clean Energy Alliance proposal that I believe is going to be discussed tonight. Quite frankly, I'm, I also want to say that after my comment, sadly, I probably won't get enough votes to be on the commission here, but I do want to serve. Climate change and its agenda is part and parcel of the radical Democrat Party that nationally was repudiated on November 5. Our president has called it a hoax. The science is not settled science. And yet, here we are talking about it again. So, really, any discussion in this chamber around climate is a political discussion. First of all, I want to consider the consequences of the Clean Energy Alliance agenda. I did some surfing this afternoon on my computer, not at the beach. And according to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, I didn't know we had one of those, but we do, the largest segment of energy usage comes from steam turbines, about 42% of all energy. Water is heated up and passed through a turbine, thereby generating electricity. One-fifth of the fuels to do this come from coal. Only 2.6% come from natural gas. And yet, with more online research, it turns out that natural gas has half the carbon dioxide emissions as fossil fuels. So, we would normally expect with common sense that those percentages would be reversed. Practically speaking, having grown up with electric stoves, they suck. They're just hard to cook on. It's very difficult to adjust them. When you turn down the burner, because of the coils, the heat stays a long time. It's very difficult to turn down a boiling or you've got too much heat on your hamburgers. It doesn't cool off quickly. And hence, all the burned dinners that I ate as a kid growing up in Levittown, Pennsylvania, were more about the stove than my mom being a lousy cook, apparently. But finally, have we really given up our city council the authority to take away normal, everyday things from our home? And I think not. Please, keep your focus on city business and keep your focus out of our kitchens. Finally...
Can you wrap up and maybe just a sentence? You can wrap up with just a sentence if you'd like to finish your thought, please.
Okay. With all due respect, Councilman Lesser, you sit on the board of this, and Mayor Hoerth is on the legislative committee, so I would respectfully ask you to recuse yourself from the conversation and the voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, but I got one of these green cards. They were sent by Eric about the parking or the, I would say, the traffic on Valley Drive. I live on Valley Drive. I've lived there for 50 years at Ninth Street. In fact, I know the neighbor. And I had talked before about parking and about us getting, having to pay for permits just because the parking up the hill became a problem. And I know you have a parking problem right now. And we're still paying for permits. There's probably about 88 of us that live in the Walk Street area of the 200 people that I had signed. Several years ago, it was going to be a temporary solution, but we're still paying for the permit to be able to park in our own neighborhood up the hill. But the real reason that I'm talking to you tonight is because Eric has put down some things that he would like to do on Valley Drive for the traffic. And I realize the traffic is a problem because I live right there and I have to pull in my driveway all the time. A lot of the traffic comes straight down Manhattan Beach Boulevard. They make a left turn and then they haul, go very fast. But also, the e-bikes go fast. He's talking about putting in another stop sign with flashing lights. I want you to be aware that that flashes into people's houses. You might think about putting them on the green belt area instead of on the walkways because the sidewalk's already crowded with a lot of signs that you have up. In fact, there's one area right on the corner of Ninth and Valley on the alley where you've got a telephone pole, and you took one of them out, but you don't even have enough room for somebody in a wheelchair to go through there. If you walk from First Street all the way through, you're going to find that you have a lot of poles in the way of people just walking, pedestrians walking. The other thing is, he was thinking about lining parking. You know, we have to crunch in little cars as it is. We get more parking when you don't have it lined on Valley. That's all residents there. It's not, it isn't anybody commercial. There are people that have to work downtown, and you've taken away most of their parking, and they're parking on Valley and on Ardmore. And I live there, and I realize that I go to these restaurants, people have to work and they have to walk somewhere. But a key thing is, is there aren't many residents here talking tonight with this that have gotten this green card to come because he has meetings, Eric does, and does proposals like he did for the parking before and now the traffic. And we don't get this until it's already at a meeting with you with a proposal. What would be really good for the residences, send us this notice when you're going to talk about it in the very beginning and let us have an input into it. We live there. I know he doesn't live in the area, and a few people on that committee do not live in the area. But get some residents. Send this card out early. Let people come and do, look at this proposal before it's already up for you to look at. So, we have a little bit of input. I really feel like we haven't had any input into it. So, a couple of things, don't line the street with parking. Put your stop signs on the side, on the side, and maybe put one right when people make the turn on Valley from Bonds when they're coming down Manhattan Beach Boulevard. Residential area, 25 miles an hour, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council. My name's Tom Williams. I live at 609 North Valley Drive, and I'm here to speak about the same thing.
And Mr. Williams, you know the items will be a separate dedicated item later, but this is, if this is the time you choose to speak, you're doing so.
Yeah, I'll speak here and I'll probably have to add some more later.
But just to confirm, I'm sorry. What we're trying to discourage with this opportunity for individuals to speak on later agenda items is that people don't have two bites of the apple, as it were, to be able to allow council to move. So, if you'd like to speak on the item, it'd be better to defer your comments.
I'll wait. I'll defer the comment.
Thank you. We welcome your comments, but want to do so at the right time.
Yes, I would like to talk about energy and the use of it. In all-electric California is a national security risk. Period. End of story. It's very easy to take down the electric grid. Our electric grid is taken down. Within a day or two, everyone's fighting for survival, and we can get invaded. I talked to military friends about this, and they go like, oh, you're right. A diverse supply and use of energy is critical to our safety and security. My heater went out, I don't know, 10, 12 years ago or something like that. And if I didn't have a fireplace, and if I didn't have, you know, other things until I can get the furnace replaced, I would have been freezing. And it's just here. But like, if you look up at Lake Arrowhead a few years ago when they got snowed in and they didn't have, if they didn't have gas because they couldn't get in and out of there for two weeks, they would have died. So, what they're trying to do is these little steps, oh, let's take away the gas water here. Let's take away this stove. It's this little itty-bitty bites to take away our freedom of choice. And it's absolutely critical that we have all these things. My gas bill is my cheapest utility bill. Why take that away? It makes no environmental sense to take gas, to burn it, to create electricity, to come over here to, to create heat. Makes absolutely no sense. That's incredibly inefficient. If you're trying to be more environmentally friendly, that's the worst way to do it. Just burn the fuel here. All you're doing is exporting... All you're doing is exporting the, the carbon. They're still, actually, they're producing more carbon doing that than actually burning it here. So it's, it's not an efficient thing and it also costs people an absolute fortune to change out a range because then you have to hire an electrician to bring in a 220 wire to the kitchen and that's incredibly expensive. So these little things are very, very destructive and making it very, very hard. And it's the whole plan to get to all-electric and all-electric is very dangerous, very, very dangerous. The grid goes out, you can't heat, you can't cook, you can't drive. It's incredibly dangerous. So stay away from it. Keep a wide source of fuels and energy we can use and wide uses of it. But don't ban any gas appliances or anything. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public that would care to speak on public comments in chambers? If not, Madam Assistant City Clerk, is there anybody on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, in which case I will close public comments. Before we move on to the consent calendar, I'm going to ask the city attorney just to confirm my understanding, and that is, at this point in approving the agenda for this evening, we have two items pulled, items five and eight. If any council member would like to pull any additional items, there would be a process that we need to go through. Is that correct?
That's correct. You'd have to make a motion to reconsider. It's like a two-step process.
Okay. I said that because I anticipated that maybe a council member might want to pull an additional item. But if not, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items five and eight? Maybe by voice vote because we have a remote member.
Sure, I'd make that motion.
I'll second it. This is an opportunity to pull. So can you repeat what the process would be if there's a desire to pull an additional item, Mr. City Attorney?
It would be a motion to reconsider the approval of the agenda.
So right now, we had already pulled five and eight and Councilmember Sherrillian had voiced his no vote, correct?
Yes.
So you're, what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, is does anybody want to pull anything additional before we make a motion to approve it?
That's correct. Yeah, I just want an explanation on number nine.
Yes, staff can come up and answer that question on number nine.
Would the appropriate course be to pull this item or can we receive comment on it in connection with the overall motion on the consent calendar?
It could be done right now.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of city council. Councilmember Sherrillian, do you have a specific question or you want me to give an overview of this item?
Just kind of the overview of what we heard from the public that whereas the funds, just kind of the flow of funds.
Yes, well, so as it relates to the overall fiscal impact, we have not specifically budgeted for these consulting services. That's why the title indicates it's unbudgeted. The fiscal implications section, I believe it does indicate no budget impact. And that's really from the perspective of, we're not asking the council to appropriate new funds to pay for these services or transfer funds from a different area to make, to allow us to procure the services. I think that's, that's nuts and bolts as it relates to the financial aspect of it. The reality is, is that we do have some vacancies in our engineering group and we've brought on consultants strategically to help carry some project management responsibilities. And so that's the reason for these amended agreements. Was there something else?
No, just, just the fact that it's unbudgeted and we got the mid-year budget coming.
So unbudgeted from the perspective of, we didn't, we don't have items in the budget, or I'm sorry, mine items in the budget specifically for this. We do have other accounts that we are paying these services for. Some of these services are going to get charged to our capital projects. And then, you know, as it relates to the concern that there's other work not getting, not getting done, we're trying to balance a lot of competing tensions. If there, if there's an opportunity to charge to grants or some of our projects, we're going to do that. But we're staying as much as we can to the course adopted by the council.
Thank you, and that answers my question.
All right.
In which case, there is a motion on the floor for the approval of the consent calendar with the exceptions of items five and eight. Motion made by Mayor Haworth with a second by Councilmember Franklin. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherrillian?
Yes.
Mayor Haworth?
Yep.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lesser?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. In which case, we will now move on to the items removed from the consent calendar, starting with item number five, which I pulled. This is the legislative platform of our city council for 2025. I'm not sure if council members want or need a presentation. The reason I pulled it is to propose an addition, which the mayor and I didn't want to as your subcommittee for the legislative platform, we didn't want to just simply add because this council has not had an opportunity to hear it. So I wanted to state what a proposed addition was unless council members would like to hear a presentation on the legislative platform. Anybody want to hear a presentation or are you good?
No.
Okay. In which case, what I'd like to propose, and then I'll open it up for public comment, is an addition which simply adds a new Section 1D on page three of the legislative platform, which is page 67 of the council meeting agenda, to the following effect. Essentially, that our city would support legislation to limit the adverse impact, impacts, plural, of large multi-tenant residential projects while fulfilling the city's state housing obligations. I can repeat that again if you'd like. But essentially, we're looking to add an item which gives the city authority to advocate for this type of legislation while fulfilling our housing obligations. Go ahead, Mayor.
Sorry, I, this is going to be one of those meetings where it's frustrating because I can't press my button. But I think, you know, to the extent that we can do something, we should. And this puts it right there in the platform and I would suggest we immediately contact Assemblymember Merit Succi and State Senator Ben Allen and say, what, what can we do that gives us some control over this so that we're not getting these huge projects? So I love the idea.
Thank you.
Could, could I make a comment, please?
Please.
Yeah. They should have been doing things already. I mean, they were there, they, I don't know if they voted for it or against it, but they should know. They both represent wealthy coastal cities that are very densely populated. So I would like to see, you know, I would, I would like to hear from them and see what they've actually done, not what they would like to do, but this has been on the table for many, many months. And I would hope that they would be at the forefront to, to serve the coastal communities in this way, so.
Okay. I would like to open it up for public comment. The only observation I would make is my understanding is our members have voted against some of the most pernicious pieces of legislation that have been adopted. But let's first hear from members of the public.
Wait, Mr.
Please, Madam.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. And just so you know, council member, I mean, Senator Ben Allen has reached out to me sometime to say, to, because he's getting our residents talking to him about these projects and he's like, wow, this is terrible. And so he wants to understand better and try to help us. So I want the community to know that, that he is actually reaching out to us. They don't always, sometimes it's not really articulated in the legislation how it might affect us on the ground. So I just, I just want you to know that he is actually looking to help us proactively.
Great. All right. Thank you. Any public comment on this item in the chamber? If not, is there any public comment online?
No request on Zoom.
In which case, I'll close public comment. Any comments by my colleagues or is there a motion to move forward with this item with the amendment which I've proposed?
So moved.
Shall we still use the buttons or shall we?
Madam City Clerk, do you want us to still use the buttons or would you prefer a voice vote? Oh, you're talking about first. Request to speak? Sure, that would help me, but go ahead.
Okay. So I follow this very closely, not only locally, but up in Sacramento. And I haven't seen much, I haven't seen anybody come to our defense to really, and this is indefensible almost, about, you know, how this is going to change the nature and the character of our, you know, residential city, primarily residential city, that just doesn't have a whole lot of space. If I can remind people, the RENA numbers, Regional Housing Need Assessment, is 774 low-income units that are various categories, very low-income, low-income, average, you know, low-income. Well, if those are only 10% of a project, that means that actually 7,000 units need to be built. And so for those of you that are saying, well, why aren't we, why don't we just take the, the lots that are allocated on Sepulveda and just put it all on Rosecrans? You can't fit 7,000 units on Rosecrans, no matter how large the lots are. So I haven't seen any activity with the SCAG to try to adjust those numbers. I haven't seen any messages of support, you know, to South Bay cities. I haven't seen proposed legislation or proposals to review these, these numbers and the like. So I welcome anything that they would, but it's been how many months since we, City Manager, Ms. County, when did we approve the sixth cycle?
March 2023.
Okay. So 2023?
Is that right? Or 2022? 2023.
Okay, so we're coming on to two years. So any support and help would be welcome. Any vocal and visible support would be welcome. And, you know, I hope we see it soon. Thank you.
Any other comments? Again, I reiterate, this gives us a tool to be able to acknowledge our housing obligations while attempting to advocate for our community and its local control. So that is why it's being proposed to be added to our legislative platform. And if there's no further comment, I would request a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Thank you for asking. I believe there was a motion made by Councilmember Tarnay with a second by Councilmember Sherrillian. Is that right?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tarnay?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherrillian?
Yes.
Mayor Haworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And now move on to the next item that was pulled from the agenda and that was pulled by me. It has to do with a mural. And I feel, I've been quite hesitant to pull this item because I was one who was not in favor of it originally, but this is now a proposal to expand its scale. And maybe we start with a staff presentation so the members of the public are clear on what we're talking about.
So we do not have a formal presentation. We have some slides of the images. Happy to give a brief overview if you'd like. And also, we have, and Mark Lehman, Parks and Recreation Director. We have Eric Brinkman, Senior Recreation Supervisor for Cultural Arts, subject matter expert, but I can give it a shot to start off with. So city council, there was an RFP for a number of murals. This was actually, there were six different locations that were being considered by city council. After evaluating all those locations, city council selected this specific site, which is just outside the civic center lower lot. And it's actually, the bridge of it is county property and city property. The approved location was on county property. In further discussions with the county, they suggested that we expand the location both onto city property and county property. And so the mural was recreated to be more expansive in that location. We worked closely with the artist, with the county, and then administratively reviewed that with the city manager and city council to approve, you know, the new rendering moving forward. And so this is again, bringing back that new rendition of the mural as well as, you know, the additional funding for that, 65,000. And it's, you know, quite expansive and it's additional 18,000 for this project out of public art trust fund dollars.
Can you show the images of what was originally approved and then what it's proposed to be now?
There should be a trigger warning to.
No, let me actually go to the, so the, the slide, the upper image, again, the original mural as well as the location that was initially approved by council is in the top slide. And then the bottom slide shows the updated version after further discussions with county, city manager and council.
Very good. Maybe we'll start with questions. I have one, if we could just show that image one more time. What troubles me just as a logistical matter is the fact that the image has gone from just flat wall of one material to now cover doors which are of a different material as well as their grates. And I'm just wondering how that's going to look, how that's going to age beyond some of my initial concerns about the location for that particular piece, which I think the artist is terrific, but I'm just a little bit questioning the location.
Understandable. And so staff had extensive conversations with the artist. We met on site, also again with county. But I will probably bring Eric up to articulate the materials that were being used to make sure that, you know, will be sufficient for this site.
Yeah, thank you. So as Mark said, we met with the artist multiple times on site to assess the wall and the different materials that would be painted onto. So what the artist is proposing is basically a three-step process. So the first, the first step of the process would be putting a grounding material, which is essentially a primer, onto the concrete, which is a different type of primer that would be used on the metal sections with the doors and the grading. After that, the artist is using spray paint. He's using kind of the gold standard quality spray paint to render this mural. And then finally, it gets coated in a sealant, which is a UV protectant and then also an anti-graffiti protectant as well. And then, just for your knowledge, in the rendering, the bottom portion where it seems that the mural is ending, the artist is proposing to paint the lower section gray to kind of mask the doors, if that makes sense. Because then there would be this, like, half of a door that would be white, you know? So they're going to match that with the color of the concrete.
Great. I have one more question for the director and then I want to see if colleagues have any questions. So if there is a prospective interest in having some public art at that site, is one of the options available to council to make a referral back to the Cultural Arts Commission to review this mural and perhaps whether we should go out to solicit any others?
Really a policy decision for council, whether, of course, you know, whatever direction we will move forward with.
Great. Colleagues, any questions? Councilmember Sherrillian.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And thank you, Eric, for explaining, you know, the issue, the concerns that I had, which is the different, different materials. Is there any, going to be any maintenance, I mean, Director Lehman or whichever? Is there going to be any maintenance on the make sure because it is a unique, you know, different materials?
Yes, the way our contracts are structured with these artists in regards to these murals, it requires the artist to maintain the artwork for five years. So typically, if an artwork is going to fail, it's going to fail quickly. So if there was some kind of adhesion issue or something like that, it would most likely happen in the near term, be four or five years, and the artist would have an opportunity to kind of, to change the materials if need be.
Thank you. And as far as the location, I think the shark's been kicked around many different locations. I like where it's at on 13th Street. It's least intrusive to residential. It's not a main, kind of thoroughfare or cut-through. That's my two cents. I like it. I like the size. It's nice.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes, thank you. To that question, you said an adhesive. Is this actually painted on the wall or is it?
So no adhesive, no films. It's, it's painted onto the wall. Yes, yes, with, with spray cans, with like spray paint essentially.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's a south-facing wall. Does that get even additional, you know, issues with fading?
Yeah, so the sealant is a UV protective coating as well, so that greatly kind of enhances the longevity of the artwork.
Okay, so just, so I understand the process. It did not go back to the cultural arts. It just, did someone request this or?
So this, this artwork was originally proposed in the first round of murals. Eric Snyder proposed this for the fire station. Council loved the artwork. Council loved the artwork but didn't like it for that particular location, so they asked staff to come back at a later date with alternate locations. We presented six alternate locations, and then council landed on the image above. And then the subsequent work with LA County is what expanded it to this size.
I see. Okay. So it's 18 plus, so this is additional 18,000 on top of what was the original cost, do you remember?
65.
I don't see it.
65,000.
65,000.
It's also Public Arts Trust Fund.
On the Public Arts Trust Fund. Oh, for 65,000 for the?
That was what it was approved on, the March 19 meeting in 2024, yes.
Wow. So this is going to be 85, $82,000?
86 would be exactly.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Mayor Haworth, do you have any questions? All right. I'd like to open this up for public comment with any member of the public in chambers care to address this item.
Hi, Ray Joseph. Here's just a little observation. I moved into my house in 2000. One of my neighbors has painted their house three times in that timeframe. The house was smooth-coated stucco, has never, all they do is rinse it. So for example, on the fire station where you have the big mural, that was smooth-coated stucco, it went from effectively zero maintenance to a high maintenance area. Because the minute you put paint on there, now you're going to have to paint it and maintain it forever unless you sandblast it down, put smooth-coated stucco back. So, and you're talking about putting a mural over that and doors and different finishes. So your cost is not 86, it's much higher because you got warranty for five, but, you know, it's, you're going to have to do something in seven, eight years and redo it because you've got, the paints can start peeling from it, fading and all that. Stucco's not very good at holding paint. So just something to consider because it's going to be a very, very high maintenance thing going. The minute you put it on there, you got maintenance forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item in chamber? If not, item Assistant City Clerk, is there any Zoom comment?
No request on Zoom.
In which case I'll close public comment, council discussion. Anyone want to jump the shark?
Good one.
Anyone want to start us off? Councilmember Franklin?
I'll do it. Since I was in the ocean on Sunday, I definitely, I just had issues with this mural. I mean, it's well done, it's beautifully proportioned, it's well executed. I go back to what I just keep saying, is that not every blank wall has to be covered. I kind of made a little joke before, before it was displayed, saying there has to be a trigger warning. You know, you got little kids walking around. It is a huge, huge, you know, mural. And, you know, sometimes it takes, you know, it takes enough to get your kids into the water because you want them to be water safe. But then when you think about, and there have been great whites walking, you know, walking around, swimming around our, you know, let's walk, how do you think it got to the garage? But swimming around our ocean. So they do exist. I just, you know, you know, if art is supposed to be evocative, this evokes consternation to me, you know, in terms of being so realistic and the like. So I think I joined you in voting against it, so, okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
No, I just, you know, this is something, like I said, it's been kicked around, and it's a Public Art Trust Fund. I think we need to move these things along and not kick it back to the commission. It was already relocated, and, you know, I think the piece is good where it is, and that's my two cents.
Mayor Haworth, do you have any comments?
Oh, sure. You know, I really, you know, I, former Councilmember DePaulitano and I were big proponents of the shark. I did take seriously what Councilmember Franklin said about it might scare little children. I still do. And I understand that it's larger now, but I think it does actually look better, bigger than the proportions and everything. So I'm sort of agnostic, but I appreciate what Councilmember Shirillian said about, you know, this has been kicked around. I think it's time to move forward. And so I would agree with that. So I would support the motion, but I was open, I actually was open, but I think I'm going to have to support it if somebody votes to move forward with it.
Okay. And I repeat, I really appreciate this artist. I like the work. My family collects contemporary art. I think the piece is fun, it's whimsical, it causes a reaction, but I can't help but be taken by its location and whether it's appropriate right there. I welcome public art at that location, but I'm just not sure for me if this is the piece I would support. So I welcome a motion if somebody would like to make it, but I will probably not be supporting this work there. I would be supportive of public art if that would be the motion to be considered by the Cultural Arts Commission, but given how I see a motion from Councilmember Shirillian, I'll let you state your motion. Motion to move the item forward.
I second that.
In which case, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Shirillian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lesser?
No.
Mayor Haworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
No.
Motion passes 3 to 2.
Okay. In which case, we now move back to our agenda. There are no public hearings this evening. We now move on to general business items, with the first being item number 11, consideration of Polywog Park Dog Run Proposal.
Evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Mark Lehman, your Parks and Recreation Director. I am excited to bring this, these recommendations from the commission forward for your consideration this evening. And to share a little bit of background, the Park Master Plan, which was completed in 2020, one of the things that it recognized was the need for more dog-friendly areas. And so the commission spent a lot of time searching throughout the city for viable locations for the dog run. And after extensive outreach, ultimately, they landed on expanding the current Polywog Dog Run. Throughout this outreach process, we've been in constant communication with the school district. The deputy superintendent was also at the community input meeting and just been collaborating through all of this continued community input. David Voltz Design was engaged for our conceptual designs. They also led the community input meeting. And then with all of that input, as well as an online survey from community members and users, the Parks and Recreation Commission began really diving into this item in May So after a number of months of discussing these items, ultimately, when they looked at the design from David Voltz Designs, there were a number of amenities that were really enhanced, and the price tag with that was $324,000. And so when looking at all the community input, the commission said, we really just need a little bit more room, enhance some of the amenities, and let's just keep this a very simple, unique design. And that's what we've heard from the community. So we are very fortunate to have an incredible Public Works Department led by Director Lee, and they are going to be able to do a lot of the recommended enhancements, actually all of them, the hard costs not to exceed $50,000. So after discussions, again, with Director Lee, as well as the commission, ultimately, they approved moving forward with a new design of, again, not to exceed the $50,000 of hard costs without really reimagining this. And I'll walk through the amenities, but really, I think they really do suit the community well. They also looked at shade structures. Unfortunately, they are extremely cost prohibitive. But in the interim, we are piloting just simple umbrellas at Live Oak Dog Run and also Polywog. And there also will be, we're working with the arborists to add some trees to this new design to add shade over time. And then we're also looking to hopefully, in addition to the two benches that we have already in the design plans, receive additional bench donations moving forward. So to walk through some of the amenities, again, this will all be done in-house, all-new perimeter fencing and poles, removing all the asphalt where all the storage sheds, porta-potties are currently, the dual drinking fountain, of course, for pets and humans, the trash receptacles, wood chips, the concrete pads are existing, and then these dog bone benches, which are a crowd favorite. The relocation of irrigation for more efficient maintenance of the area, redoing the lighting. And so Public Works will relamp these with LED lights and repaint them, not actually having to replace all of the hardware. And then I have a separate slide showing you the removal of one of the small trees to allow access on either side of the trees for the dogs to run throughout the dog run. So walking through the site, again, on the west side, this is currently the view, and I think this is the biggest benefit of this expansion. It will be beautiful. It will open up, and you'll be, the sightlines will be directly through the dog run into Polywog Park. And on the left, the picture on the left-hand side, so the porta-potties will be relocated outside of the fence line of Beg Field, as well as the shed for AYSO and Miracosta Pony. And then the picture on the right, those will all be recycled containers. So the 40-footer is the school district, they will be recycling that. And then the two are actually the cities for Beg Pool operations, and those will be recycled as well. And then we'll have a tough shed relocated, I actually have a separate slide to show you what that would be relocated on the southwest side of Beg Pool. And then as we move, just starting from the north, moving towards the south, the, again, the new trash enclosures, new drinking fountain, expanding the entrance another 10 feet to the west, and removal of the asphalt, there'll be new DG to level it, as well as new wood chips. And then as we move towards the south, again, these are the red benches that will be swapped out with the dog bone benches, and then again, removing that fence, I'm not sure if the fence's holding up the trees or vice versa, but we'll be removing all of that, the sightlines will be much more visible. And then from the south and looking north, again, on the picture on the left, you see that blue trash can, so that's where the small tree will be removed. And as you can see with sightlines, that would give the opportunity for the dogs to run side to side. And as I mentioned, the arborist is looking, adding four new trees that will provide shade along the west fence as well. So just so you get a better idea where the sheds will be relocated, so both the porta-potties and the AYSO and Miracosta Pony sheds will be moved to this area, which is DG, and it's outside the fence, kind of the southeast corner of Beg Field. And then the storage shed for Beg Pool will now be, it will be a tough shed, and it will be the southwest corner of the Beg Pool site. And then just providing a bird's eye view, again, this is the cutout of the expansion for the dog run. It's just over 1,300 square feet. And this was actually also an area that they were looking to add a small dog run, a separate, but ultimately about 80% of the respondents prefer just having an open space for all-sized dogs. I also wanted to mention, depending upon council action moving forward with Beg Pool and any of the construction or enhancements that will not impact any of the Beg Pool, you know, operations or construction. And also, I wanted to mention, it will not impact parking. Again, this will just be removing or relocating all of the sheds, but it will not be within the parking lot. And then just again, highlighting a few of the amenities, the dog bone, which is beloved by, I think everyone we talked to during the process, again, the drinking fountain with the pet bowl, and then, as I mentioned, the small shade trees that will be planted within the dog run. And then this last slide, I know the text is way too small, but this is from the David Voltz Designs, and what I really wanted to show was, you know, all the time and energy the commission, you know, took to really value engineer this and look at, you know, what do we actually need? And so what is omitted in terms of amenities will be the pet ranch station, the new light fixtures, actually replacing those out, rock cobble decking, and a dog agility area. So I still think the core amenities that we get from $324,000 to $50,000 in doing it in-house, it was just a great decision by the commission after many, many meetings and community input. So that, staff recommends the City Council approve the Polywog Dog Run Proposal as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thank you.
Available for any questions?
Thank you for that report. Any council questions? Councilmember Franklin?
Yes, thank you. Well done. I love those numbers. I just was trying to get my hand around, or my head around, the dimensions. There was a total of, how many square feet that were going to be added?
1,350.
Okay, so what is the length and the width?
So approximately 10 feet by 130.
10 feet, okay. So, and then, so you're going to go through, so you'll have to knock down the old fence, all the storage containers are moved?
Correct.
To give you those 10 feet by, how many 10 feet?
About 130.
Okay, great. And did we go back and ask the, people are very possessive of their dog runs, have they been notified of this? Like what it's, you know, I mean, I talked to a couple of people that didn't want to move anything, but I just want to see if any of that was just set up.
So, I mean, again, I know the survey information was attached as well, and there was a number of one-offs, but I would say the overwhelming majority are extremely pleased that really wanted just basic amenities in this upgrade and a larger space for the dogs to run.
Right, okay. Great, well, good job.
Any further questions from councilmembers in chambers? I see actually a question from our mayor, Mayor Haworth, maybe I'll go to her first she's next in line.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I bet you're wondering how I got that button pressed. So, yeah, it's, what a great plan, and I, you know, have to commend everybody for working on it in-house. That's just tremendous. So what are the hours that this will be open?
I will double check that. I believe it is 7:00 AM, and then the seasonality, depending upon when it gets started, but I believe 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay.
And I will double check those.
And was there any, I think at one point I brought this up, that in New York City at Central Park, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, which may be too late, they have off-leash hours in many, most areas of Central Park. And is there any consideration, and this, you know, we could talk about this additionally to this dog run, but to off-leash hours in the park, like 6:00 to 7:00? You know, I don't know what time the early classes at MBMS start or Meadows, but, you know, if you're worried about kids or something, you could have at least from 6:00 to 7:00 be off-leash hours in the park.
So, you know, this is something we have discussed in previous years, it's absolutely something we can look in, look into based on council direction. I know there's some risk associated with this, but again, it's something that we can look into and bring some options for council consideration.
My husband made me say that, so.
Nice. Okay, is that it, Mayor? Okay. Councilmember Tarnay?
Thank you for that report, and to everyone who worked on it, I think it's a great plan. Just want to, I'm curious how long that construction time is going to take.
I will look to Director Lee for that.
Construction should take, I think it's probably less than a week. So there's going to be some lead time if we get the green light to move ahead. I know there's some coordination with the school district that has to happen, there's some of the school district containers that need to be removed. Once we can get the site cleared, the actual work will go fast.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shriman?
Thank you. And I echo my colleagues, great plan, great collaboration between Parks and Rec, Public Works, and the commission as well, you know, good project. Just a quick question, Mark, Director Lehman, the seating benches, how many, just seating benches and the drinking fountains, I guess I just want, because the footprint is so large now?
Correct. So with the current design plan, we have one drinking fountain, one dual drinking fountain, we have the two benches, and potentially, again, that's where we can expand based on, you know, potential donors, we could add a third or fourth. And again, that can be done in-house, Public Works would pour the concrete pad, and then we can order the dog bone benches off the shelf. They're approximately $5,000.
Are the drinking fountains really expensive? Because one might be a little, not too many for that size.
They're just over $6,000. But it's also, I know, moving the irrigation line and the hardware associated with that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin, do you have a follow-up?
Yes. Yes, just one quick question. How often do the chips get replaced in our dog parks?
Director Lee questioning.
Because I was over there taking a look at this, and then somebody said, "Wow, they need to be replaced," and I have no idea.
I believe it's once annually.
Once annually?
It might be more frequent, but I know there's a rotation that we've got that the Polywalk Park Dog Run gets chips that have been used in other areas of the city.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Director Lehman, I have one question with regard to sun shade options, which is referenced in the staff report. To the extent that there might be a desire to get something off the shelf which is cheaper, just what is the thought there? Because there would be afternoon sun, particularly juvenile trees.
Correct. And so the umbrellas that we're piloting, it's not ideal. They're not, you know, commercial grade, however, they are relatively inexpensive, and they do tilt throughout the day. And so, again, at Live Oak, we've had a little bit more success. We have two umbrellas there currently. We had one at Polywalk Park that led us here. It was not in good shape after a few weeks, again, with winds. So, but I think we'll continue that for, you know, just to pilot it and see if there are any other options. But again, with the engineering drawings, with the way that these shade structures have to be engineered, it's just extremely cost prohibitive. But as I mentioned, the additional trees, that will be planted. I know the arborist had mentioned they grow extremely quickly. I think within three years, I think they were 30 feet, 30 to 40 feet, I believe. So I think we'll have ample shade in time.
Helpful, thank you. Any other questions before I open the public comment? Any public comment on this item for members here in the chamber? Any members of the public?
I have ball crazy dog. And over at Live Oak, you've got the tall fence on the screen for the baseball field on one side, and an eight-foot fence at the back. So when you throw the ball to the dog, and you've got the three- or four-foot one on the long valley, the ball will bounce over that, and you're like. So, and dogs love to chase the ball, and there's nowhere to chase a ball unless it's in those dog parks, is the challenge. And so if you're throwing the ball, you know, you don't want it bouncing over a low fence. So I didn't see anything in there regarding color fences, so the ball doesn't go over it. You know, because what, I think what was there before was all the four-foot fence all around over there. But just, you know, something to consider. And if you look over at Live Oak Park, the dogs don't use the water bowl. They have a separate bowl off to the side with a hose about this long, where people just fill it up and then just leave it like that. Because, you know, the dogs go over there, they'll deposit in there, slash it all out. And that's a much easier solution, because that one little bowl, there's not enough water for them. And you also have to press a button, fill it up for them to drink, versus just having a bowl that'll just be full. But just literally having a bowl sitting on the ground with a hose going to it, all the owners are there, dump out the water, put in some fresh water. They maintain it. So you don't need to get something super fancy. You just literally need a short hose and a bowl. And the owners, they've been doing that very well over at Live Oak. But just, you know, just little things to consider, but the dogs that chase the ball, so you need to have some higher fence for that. It's my few cents.
Thank you. Any other comments in chambers on this item? If not, the Madam Assistant City Clerk, are there any comments from Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
In which case, I'll close public comment on this item and maybe just follow up with a question that was asked by a member of the public on the fencing. Director Lehman? How high is the fence? Is there any concern about bouncing balls? Particularly into the parking lot, to be quite serious, where cars coming when dropping off kids?
And I know that does happen on occasion. I think it's that balance. I think what we've heard, too, people do like, I believe it's four or five foot currently. So we are maintaining the current height of the fence. People like the socialization, as people are walking through the pathway to have that dialogue back and forth. So we did receive input, you know, about maintaining the current height as well.
There's also a question about the water. Can you just quickly articulate that one more time?
Yes, and we can easily make that happen, and that could be our secondary water station. So we will, again, with the central irrigation, I think it will be much easier to add that onto the dog run.
Okay. I see that a motion has been made by councilmember. Actually, are there any other comments that councilmembers would like to make? I would like to make a brief comment, then entertain a motion. And that is simply, what a great project. And thank you to the commission and members of the public that participated in this process, where I think we've ended up at a far better solution than what was originally proposed, at a far, far lower cost. And I think it's basically what other dog owners, like my family, welcome in a dog park. Something not too fancy, something simple, and an opportunity for our dogs to run around. So I'm very much in support of the project. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I see that a motion has been made by councilmember Franklin. Would you like to state your motion?
Sure. I move that we accept item number 25-0027, consideration of Polywalk Dog Park Dog Run proposal.
Woof.
Second it.
And it's been seconded by councilmember Tarnay. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Holworth?
My dog, Juno, says yes.
Councilmember Sherrillian?
My dog, Oreo, says yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lesser?
I and my family of dogs say yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
My cat says, "What's all the fuss?"
Councilmember Tarnay?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, before we move on to item number 12, there has been a request for a five-minute break. So we will stand in recess for roughly five minutes. Thank you all for your break.
Pegasus, can we go live?
We're live.
Okay, I'd like to call the council meeting back to order and we'll proceed now with item number 12, consideration of a request from Waste Management to adjust solid waste diversion requirements in the city's franchise agreement for integrated solid waste management services.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Eric Lee, your Public Works Director. Tonight, here to present our item on solid waste diversion requirements. As a little bit of background as it relates to solid waste, diversion relates to keeping as much material as we can out of the landfill. So there's a variety of ways that if we can do that, the best way to do that is to not generate waste in the beginning, or if a waste is generated, to either products are used, reused, or donated. And then another way to keep items out of landfill would be to divert them. And that would either be through recycling, traditional recycling, or organics recycling, which turns that into compost. So when we talk about diversion throughout this presentation, that's really what we're referring to. These are the ways, we're focusing mostly on recyclables and composting tonight. As it relates to recycling and processing, just more background in our blue bin, we put plastics and soda cans, glass bottles, paper, flattened cardboard, et cetera. Waste Management processes all of our recycling at their recycling center in Sun Valley. And then for organics, this is the newest cart that we all have. It's the green bin, and that's where our yard trimmings go, food waste, and soiled paper goods and whatnot. And this is the latest state mandate that we've got as of a few years ago. And this is also a big focus as it relates to divert. And all of our green waste is processed at the South Valley compost facility in Tulare County. And so, you know, just as a recap, you know, we want to show this slide. Our landfill that most of our waste goes to is in Corona at El Sabrante. We try to keep as much as we can out of landfill by either recycling it, either traditional cycling or organic recycling. So as it relates to diversion, our contract with Waste Management requires them to divert at least 50% of all the tonnage they collect from the landfill. So this chart shows that that was not achieved in 2023. We have had similar results in the years prior. And that's really the focus of our discussion tonight, is the majority of our waste is going to landfill rather than at least half of it being diverted. And so as it relates to waste collection, there are three types of waste collection that happen. Our franchise agreement with Waste Management, or WM, this is the blue section, the hauler, they take all of our residential and commercial waste. There's also construction and demolition waste that's generated. That's done on a permit basis throughout the city. Waste Management has a line of their business that they do that collection. They don't have any exclusivity with our community on that. And we're considered an open market. And if you're doing a construction project in town, you can contract with anybody to take that waste away. The third party and self haul would be the last type of waste collection. And there's, as the council knows, we've got a number of larger businesses in town, and they are of such a scale that it makes sense for them to handle their own waste on themselves, their recycling, I'm sorry, by themselves. Oftentimes, they send those back to like the national office or regional headquarters, or they have an arrangement with somebody else to take the waste. And it doesn't get into the Waste Management stream to be counted for tonnage collected or tonnage diverted. And so, you know, the issue that we've been working with Waste Management for about nine months now, and was brought to the council's attention over the summer of '24, was the fact that they continue to not be able to hit the 50% requirement for diversion. And so as a way of more background, when the contract was bid in 2019, the proposal that Waste Management provided was actually to get to 46% diversion. Upon negotiation with Waste Management, they agreed to increase that 50%. However, as you can see through this last column here, the performance has fallen significantly short of the 50% during the first three years, three, four years of the contract. Additionally, we're going to talk about transformation, and there's a note here about transformation. So transformation is waste, solid waste speak for burning your trash. And so that's no longer allowed in California. And that was ended, I think it ended in '22. So in '23, there was no transformation allowed anywhere in the state of California. Prior to '23, communities will get credit to meet their diversion goals with CalRecycle for up to 10% of that being transformed. But that's not really, burning your trash is not really recycling. And so that has gone away in California. And the facility that Waste Management used in Long Beach has since ceased that operation, and I believe it's being converted into something else. So in working with Waste Management, what we've come to understand from them, how they're struggling with meeting our 50% diversion requirement, certainly transformation is no longer available to them. And so that's 10% that they were realizing in 2021 and '22 that is no longer there. It should be noted that in their proposal, they only proposed 1% of transformation. Another thing, as it relates to just commercial recycling, when they did the research and preparing to propose for our, you know, what could be a 10-year agreement that we currently have with them, they estimated that they would be able to recycle 4,000 plus tons of commercial waste annually. In reality, that's, they've realized less than half of that amount. And so those are some of the two big drivers for Waste Management as it relates to not being able to meet our contract requirements. And so part of the contract, in order to make sure that the community is getting the value from the contract, is if they don't perform in this aspect of the business, that there's actually penalties that are assessed to Waste Management. And so, you know, what this table is trying to show is that for the first three years of the contract, they hit 43, 45, and almost 32% each year, far short of the 50%. And there's $25, $25 per ton liquidated damage penalty that's assessed. And so in these three years, they paid $53,000 in the first year, $36,000 in the second year. And we've noticed to assess $145,000 for 2023. Under the contract, they've, there's some hearing processes that they've requested. And that liquidated damage has not been fully assessed, but we've noticed them on that. And so, you know, one of the questions you might have is if we have a contract that's a seven-year contract with three, one-year extensions to make it a 10-year contract, why are we even talking about these things? And the reason is, is there is language in the contract that at the request of either party, the city or Waste Management, and not more than once every two years, we agree to talk about these types of issues, to make sure that the diversion requirements actually make sense for the way that this aspect of our business is being run. And so Waste Management did request a meeting confer. We met with them extensively throughout 2024. The dates that we met are listed here. And that's how we were able to really, from our side, determine what we're dealing with and, you know, communicating this information back to the council tonight. So as it relates to requests that Waste Management is asking from the city, they're asking for us to lower the diversion requirement from 50% to something in the 30% range, in the 30s, potentially allow third-party recycling to be credited towards the diversion, to help them meet that, and also potentially allow construction and demolition recycling to also be credited towards that diversion. And so, you know, our response has been, when we let the RFP out, when we entered into the contract, it was explicit that these were our requirements. We wanted 50%. We were not going to be considering third-party diversion. And construction and demolition recycling was also not going to be counted towards. And that was, these were known provisions from the very beginning for all the haulers that proposed for us. And so while they have struggled to meet this 50%, the basic requirements on the city side have not changed. And so, you know, our response to Waste Management has been, well, what would it take to actually get to this 50%? And so, you know, at the end of these meeting confer processes, or the meetings, Waste Management really cannot articulate a way that they could get to 50% and has really only been able to articulate how they could get very minor changes from where they're currently at now. So I think last year, they came in at about 32%. They're thinking they're going to be at 36% for 2024. I'm sorry, 2023, they were almost 32%. 2024, which we haven't true up yet, they're anticipating 36%. They think that they might be able to get about a percentage more than that. And so we still continue to have some outstanding concerns. You know, by this point, and in the contract, we anticipated, we've got four years under our belt, diversion should be increasing as the contract is increasing. That hasn't happened. There should be incentives for them to continue to improve the level of service. And liquidated damages certainly are not helping in that regard. And then additionally, we continue to have state mandates that we need to comply with. And so simply saying, agreeing to, you know, any change in diversion requirements doesn't necessarily help us meet those. And then there's fiscal implications. The city entered into a contract with Waste Management to really provide rates that our residents and businesses pay. And those are based on outcomes that were prescribed in the contract. If we're not getting those outcomes, should the rates be adjusted accordingly as well? And up to this point, Waste Management is not interested in discussing a rate decrease in that regard. In fact, this council heard over, you know, some of the meetings we had in 2024, how, you know, Waste Management is underwater with this contract. That's their assertion. And so the idea of taking a rate decrease, they're explaining to us that that would actually exacerbate their fiscal issues with the Manhattan Beach service. And so, you know, bottom line, as we're coming out of this meeting confer process with Waste Management, they're indicating that they do anticipate getting beyond 37% with the way that the contract is currently structured and the way that the service is currently provided. And so, recommendation tonight is for the council to discuss this request, to adjust the solid waste diversion requirements, and provide direction to staff on how to proceed. And of course, I'm available for any questions you might have. Our consultant, HFNH, which is known statewide to be subject matter experts in the realm of solid waste, they're with us tonight if you have specific industry questions. And our partners at Waste Management are also here.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Colleagues, Mayor Hoerth, do you have any questions?
I do have some questions. So Waste Management would like to be able to use some of the third-party folks, their efforts towards diversion to act towards their diversion rates, correct?
That is correct.
I can't, okay. And so our third party, would it be everything from, say, goodwill, right, to if I take stuff up to the recycling center, it's scatter good? Does that count as third party?
No, and I'm going to turn that question over to Solid Waste Administrator Anna-Luc Jones. She'll be able to give a much more precise definition of what that is.
Yeah, that would be great, because I also was going to ask about Ridwell, which is new to the area. So I look forward to this. I have another question as well.
Good evening, Anna-Luc Jones, Public Works. Third-party recycling typically comes from commercial businesses that are donating their recycling, or they are giving it to another processor. So in the state of California, it is completely legal for a commercial business to, let's say, give their recycling to another hauler, okay? And another hauler can process that recycling. There's a couple rules around that. Number one, the other hauler cannot take any material from a Waste Management container. Once material is inside that Waste Management container, it belongs to the generator of that material, like the business, and it belongs to Waste Management. So if a business were to set their cardboard to the side, it never touches a WM container, and then they give it to another hauler to process, that is completely legal. Also, the person who's accepting the recycling cannot charge the business. That then violates the franchise agreement. So...
Sorry. So do we have businesses who are doing that?
Yes.
Okay. How hard would it be? I mean, why wouldn't we give them credit for that?
So there's a little bit of history here. Thank you very much. Good question. In our 2001 franchise agreement with Waste Management, we did allow third-party recycling. And in the monthly tonnage reports that we would receive from the hauler, the third-party recycling tonnage amount was the exact same number for nine years. And every year, and just to be fair, the staff that's here was not there. So it just, you know, just to be fair. But the number remained the same for nine years. There were many requests made to at least get a top 10 list of who the third parties were. And then CalRecycle, they typically meet with the cities once a year to go over all of our programs. And they started to become uncomfortable with the number staying the same. So they then made the request, and it didn't change. So then CalRecycle said, you need to remove this requirement or allowance from your franchise agreements moving forward. That's the whole thing.
That's super interesting. Thank you. You know, something we could discuss later. Part of the diversion, you know, they're saying they're not going to be able to reach the 50% that we, and I was part of the subcommittee who helped, you know, work with AJ Janelle and everything, all of that. Is also part of that related to how people recycle in our town? So for instance, and is that just residential, is that commercial, that they're not getting the 50%?
The challenge is in the commercial, the challenge is in the commercial.
It's a commercial. So I want to ask if, and I don't want this to be a leading question. I'm trying to figure out a way to ask it. But are we, is there something we could do as a city, or is there something we need to work with our businesses on in order to get these diversion rates up? Because we're saying, well, you know, now there's Waste Management, WM, sorry, I mean, is only getting it, you know, guaranteeing or saying they can get to 37%, but they can't get it if people aren't putting it out. You know, they can't divert it if people aren't recycling property. So is there anything that should be done about it at our level or on that end, the user end?
Absolutely. Everybody is responsible for how we get to the diversion rate, the hauler, the city, and the customer. In terms of commercial, we started having these discussions before this contract began, which led us to trying to find the space and deal with the space constrained businesses in the downtown. It inspired the refuse enclosure review changes that have gone on to, because a lot of the businesses said, we would love to, but we just don't have the space. And so the state has...
Interesting, okay.
...has de minimis and space constraint waivers that they've allowed up until this point, but they're not supposed to be one and done. You just get a waiver and then you're released from that responsibility. The state is requiring that we work with these locations to get them to comply. So part of the responsibility is to find and create and generate space where everybody can have the containers that they need for organics and recycling. And then also, part of 1383 is the enforcement element. So down the road, and this is part of the intense part of 1383, is contamination fees. So under 1383, if you put trash in your recycling, recycling in your trash, organics in your recycling, recycling in your organics, you're supposed to be charged a fee. We have not implemented that as of yet. That would probably create a very serious situation. But in terms of what can be done, yes, that is on the menu.
So there's the trash enclosures, there's enforcing, but then there's also the fact that, and it's not just downtown businesses, or like where we've been really struggling with trash enclosure problem. I mean, I just think it's not just Waste Management that's not being able to reach the diversion rate. So I'm hesitant to penalize them for that. But those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shabu.
Thank you. Just want to confirm that the Waste Management contract is our largest contract?
Yes, it's the largest contract the city has.
Thank you. Couple more quick questions. We were doing fine up until 20, not fine, but we were still under the 50%. We're at 45 at '22. In '23, we dipped down to 32, and we're trending 37 for 2024. Can you tell me how much AB 1857 with the transformation credit had to do with that drop? Or did it have, was it all of it based on that?
Waste Management has reported that that is the, that is the source of the drop, was 1857. And so the elimination of transformation credit, just to give you background, so CalRecycle, when they first came out with AB 939, which... Recycle, when they first came out with AB 939, which required all the cities in California to divert 50% of their waste from the landfill, there were a lot of challenges. This was back in the 90s. There were a lot of challenges on how cities were going to get there. And so there were certain, let's say, Band-Aid solutions that were allowed to help cities do that. They were allowed to use something called ADC, Alternative Daily Cover, where your green waste could go as like base cover at landfills. And they were like, well, it's, it's being used for something. They allowed that for many years to help cities reach their goal. ADC has been phased out. And the transformation was another one of those temporary solutions, waste to energy. And I think Leith may be able to speak to this more, but I believe a lot of the rationality behind it was waste to energy in California is very different than waste to energy in Texas because the air quality management district is much stricter here. And so incineration-type facilities run at a different level here than they do in other states. And there was multiple years of discussions that transformation would be phased out and it eventually, in 2023, you could no longer use it for credit. And then the closest facility to us, Surf in Long Beach, that went out of business.
Great. Couple more quick questions. So it's a true statement, obviously, that AB 1857 came into effect after we commenced the agreement with Waste Management.
That's correct.
So the 50% that they had included as the diversion rate in the agreement was prior to this Assembly Bill?
Yes, but when they provided their, so when the haulers provide their proposal, they have to create a seven-year plan of how they think they're going to meet their diversion rate. And in the proposal, Waste Management attributed only 1% of their diversion success to transformation. But because of the challenges with commercial recycling, they thought they were going to see better numbers with commercial recycling in a nutshell. They ended up having to pivot and use the full 10% allowable transformation.
Great, no, thank you. So real quick, on the CND services, what would that come to as far as an additional diversion rate?
They would, so, CND, do you mind asking your question again? Because I think I could go in four different directions. I want to make sure.
No, it's okay. The CND, the Construction and Demolition Services, if they were to take that on, what would that be in a percentage for diversion rate?
They would, they would skyrocket to the 50 on day one. Yeah, because inert material, rubble, it's so heavy. It would be fine.
Last question for now is, I know that, you know, obviously, I think Director Lee mentioned that they're kind of upside down on this contract and no rate drops, but what about a rate neutral? Because I know we always, I mean, it's kind of the same, but we're not like reducing rates, but maybe one year, they'd be amicable to not increasing the rates by CPI. Just more of a comment, but that's my questions.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Charnay, do you have a question?
Just have a couple of questions. Are other cities facing similar challenges on their diversion numbers?
Yes, they are. The city closest to us, it was mentioned in the staff report, Athens submitted to Redondo Beach a request to reduce their diversion with them. They were awarded at 75% diversion and they're requesting to go down to 50. And Leith may be able to speak to this more, but my understanding is the business model at Athens is changing. They were typically what you would call a black bin company. They preferred everybody to just put everything in one container and then they sort on the backend. And that model is changing where they're doing more source-separated recycling. They're encouraging people to put more into the recycling container and they're processing or sorting less trash on the backend.
And then do we have any information on cities that are similar to ours, what their diversion targets are?
I will say that it is not, unless Leith wants to share, it's not as common for cities to have direct diversion requirements in the franchise agreement. Our 2001 contract merely stated that the hauler needs to help us meet our state requirements, and that was it. And so it was in our 2011 contract that we created more dynamic goals to try to get our programs to expand. Leith or Lindsay, did you want to share anything about other cities?
Good evening, Leith Zet, HFNH Consultants. I've been assisting the city for more than 20, 25 years out here with your various trash contracts. You know, under SB 1383, the organics, a lot of the focus has changed in the compliance world. They'll focus on getting recycling and organics containers in place and not as concerned with the diversion requirements themselves. That being said, the state has observed over a period of several years now that the statewide diversion rate has been declining for a variety of different reasons. They've also, the state has eliminated the processing of mixed trash as the primary recycling form, which some cities like Redondo and some others have done portions of their waste. Unless you can take that material to what they call a high diversion facility, which has, there's only one, there's only one in the state that has achieved that goal. It was up in Northern California. I believe they may have just added another one in Southern California recently. So companies that were trying to process mixed waste, most of their facilities failed to meet that goal. So as a result, now they're having to roll out separate recycling containers since they can't achieve it with mixed waste. Besides the transformation, which, you know, what did make a big deal, 14% of, to answer your question, Council, Charlotte, Charlotte, was transformation. Last year it was 10 and a half percent prior year, so it was a big chunk of things. As Anna has mentioned, they don't allow alternative daily cover, which is essentially the stuff that comes back end of a MRF and ground-up organic material they can't use for anything else. Used to be able to put it up to replace dirt in the landfill. Can't do that anymore. I think that started a little before 2020. And that made a big, that made a big difference, so. And then a few years before that, there was China banning a lot of the contaminated recyclables from being shipped over there. So there were a lot of things that have worked against the state's overall diversion rate. What I'm seeing is that most jurisdictions, in terms of just what their hauler is achieving, forgetting, you know, the third-party and source reduction that may have occurred, it's somewhere in the 30s. That's what they're, that's what they're getting in the world. Now, there's other diversion that's happening in the city, and that's all great, but it's just Waste Management doesn't control it. Think about all the newsprint and the magazines people used to get. They're all gone, it's all digital now. Waste Management doesn't get any credit for that because it's not something they're collecting and recycling, but, you know, in terms of from a city perspective, those are all good things that are out there happening.
Thank you.
Leith, I have a few follow-up questions for you. First of all, it's nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For having your service to our city over many years. So let's say hypothetically, our city feels strongly that we want a 50% diversion rate. How does a waste hauler meet that number? What are the different strategies, I think Anna Loup mentioned, helping certain quantities that might allow us to meet that? What would be the way that we'd be able to achieve that with our waste hauler?
Well, you'd have to process a lot of mixed trash in addition to whatever recycling programs you have. You know, it's expensive and it's low recovery, but you can get more there. And anybody that is currently not recycling, whether they have a waiver or whatever, whatever the case may be, Anna talked about the space constraint waivers, getting them all into a program would help. And if the city was willing to bite off the unpopular measure of assessing contamination fees for folks that are not placing the right materials in their containers, you'd probably get a lot of flack as a council, but it would make, it would make a difference. Particularly on the organics side, we're seeing that a lot of people are not participating in those programs. Even though the containers have been placed out, participation is low. And I'm talking generally in the region, not to the city specifically. On the residential organic side, people are just not putting much of the food into their organic containers.
There was a reference to the city of Redondo Beach, where the waste hauler has proposed to move from 75%, which they required under their franchise agreement, to 50%. There was a reference also to how that may be changing as well, but how would they achieve 50% if we can't achieve more than 37%?
Well, they retained us as well to help them, and we're negotiating that now, so unfortunately, they don't have something I can share publicly at this point.
Perhaps you can opine. There is a value that we included in our contract for the 50% diversion rate. And if now there's a request to be held to a 37% diversion rate, there's a delta. There's a value in that beyond just the liquidated damages value. Is there a way, a methodology to identify what the value of that is to our ratepayers to the extent that we paid for a, for our customers to get 50% diversion and it's not being delivered?
Well, the biggest difference, as we described, is, you know, the transformation's gone, right? And transformation is a lot more expensive than disposing trash. So that can be valued, and that would account for a lot. Now, the company would tell you, well, we didn't count on transforming the waste, so it was never in our performance. I don't want to get stuck in the middle of that. But the reality is, they were doing it, and now they're not. And it was a lot more expensive to do that than to put that waste trash. You could value it though.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmembers, Mayor, any further follow-up questions before I open up for public comment? Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open this item up for public comment. First, for those in the chamber that would like to offer their opinion.
It's me again, Stefan. Thank you, Eric, for the presentation. I read through it and was scratching my head about what we were going to talk about tonight. So brought a lot of light to it as Eric went through it. What I found interesting was, is as you guys think about this, here's a couple of questions I'd like to ask. One is, could we see the data between residential and commercial? Because it would be really interesting to know, how well are we doing on the residential side versus commercial, so we know where to focus our energy? Okay? Second is, you know, the process in this diversion, as a resident, we have three bins. We put it out there, and I assume that's how it gets diverted. Now, I don't know if at these locations, and maybe you can answer this up here, is do we do another sorting and then, you know, check on us and get it re-sorted? Because that's a huge amount of manual labor behind that. I don't know. That would be interesting to know because that's a lot of cost on their side. What was the other one I had in here? Oh, the other one that I think would be really interesting to know is, we talk about hitting these goals. What is achievable? What is our realistic goal? I mean, if I look at what we have in there, can we actually achieve 50%? Can we actually, I mean, do we have 60% that goes to solid waste that is truly that? Because if we set a goal that's not achievable, that's kind of lunacy. So I think that would be good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public that are here in the council chamber?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Sandra Persley. I'm here on behalf of Waste Management, also known as WM. I have a couple of slides to cover. And bear with me because there's, I'm bursting with answers to some of your questions, and it's a very complicated issue, and I only have a short amount of time to cover a lot of information. I'm going to skip over the timeline here because I think staff did a great job in outlining where we've been so far. I do want to point out just one fact on this slide. Just because of all of the changes, there was the change in law with transformation, but between 2018, when we bid this contract, and 2020, when service started, there was the recycling crisis, there was SB 1383, which drastically impacted organics and the cost to process, there was the pandemic, which impacted the cost of everything. And then later, there was the loss of alternative daily cover, which has been covered, and then also the loss of transformation as diversion credit. So a lot of things have changed since the start of the agreement. On the next slide, we have been talking for a long time with staff, and thank you, by the way, to staff and to the consultant and to the Solid Waste Committee for reviewing our requests and contract to date. But we've actually been talking about this back to 2022 in preparation for the change in law in 2023. And we explored all kinds of options, including new technology. WM spent $215,000 in 2023 exploring a new technology in hopes of bridging the gap of the loss of transformation. Ultimately, it's a finicky technology that's wildly expensive for not a lot of return, and so too much of a benefit to the ratepayers. So we looked at options really with the idea of what would maximize compliance with Cal Recycle and minimize the impact to the residents and businesses of Manhattan Beach. Fortunately, because of concerns expressed in the RFP process and later on, there are multiple provisions within our agreement that allow the city and WM to meet and confer to discuss diversion impacts. And many of these things that we're proposing are called out as optional programs. So what we've proposed has no impact to residents and businesses from a rate perspective. They comply with Cal Recycle, and they're allowable, or at least allowed to be considered within the framework of our existing provision. So option one, maintain the current threshold to 50%. I want to answer one of your questions. If we were to count all of the CND recycled within the city today, that would represent approximately 15% more in diversion credit. And I want to point out that the third-party, and I'm going to explain that, and CND, that's recycling happening within your city, as Leith mentioned, that you are not getting credit for today. So WM would carry that burden, and we've done that already on the third-party that I can explain on the next slide, of validating those numbers and reporting those numbers on the city's behalf in order to get credit going forward. So without this, the city does not get credit for that diversion with, within our, the framework of our agreement or otherwise. Option two, you could reduce the threshold. And I do want to point out that while we did dip in 2023 with the loss of transformation, we've been working really hard. I think all of you know our local recycling coach dedicated only to Manhattan Beach, Bobby. He's met with all of the businesses a minimum of two times per year. We, without any enforcement from the city, engage in the waiver process. And a lot of the things we would have to do to move the needle in front of, in terms of diversion, can be disruptive, like enforcement for organics when there isn't a lot of space, like the one-time fees that have been mentioned. And you can do those things, but they are, they do come with an impact. For clarification, the residential diversion, the last number was 47.3, and commercial is closer to 18%. And that third-party, which if you could advance to the next slide, please. I just want to clarify what this is. So you can see on the slide, we have Ralphs, Gelson's, Trader Joe's, Bristol Farms, Target, Bonds, and CVS within the city. And this is just the big ones. They, they have their own pallets, they have their own cardboard, they often send those back to their warehouses. This is a perfectly acceptable program for Cal Recycle to count towards diversion. We have already, we engaged Lisa Ryder, a third-party consultant that's very well-known in the industry, very respected, to measure this process according to Cal Recycle standards. Bobby goes on a monthly basis and validates, and this represents just under 2,600 tons of recyclables, that it's recycling that's occurring within the city that the city's not getting credit for today, and we're saying that we would shoulder the burden of continuing to monitor that. And I do want to speak to the nine years of the third-party not changing. That was common for the industry everywhere tied to AB 939. In 2007, with SB 1016, the Cal Recycle shifted from a weight-based measurement of 50% to a per capita disposal, pounds per home, pounds per person per home per day. And that, that's when a lot of jurisdictions shifted away from a weight-based measurement to a program good faith effort measurement. And that's when Cal Recycle started saying, hey, this number isn't moving. It was, it was tied to a basier study and a practice within the industry prior to that. So it was perfectly normal for that to not change prior to 2007. And then with that per capita measurement- And then with that per capita measurement, that's when they started asking for the validation of that number. We feel, we are doing everything that we can to boost diversion. It is enormously expensive to maintain recycling with all of the factors that I mentioned in the beginning, and we've worked really hard to explore all of the options. And we're willing to pull the levers that may be uncomfortable for your residents. We think, and just to, this third party, by the way, this represents 8% diversion. So we're at the, we ended the year in 2024 at 37%. We think we can capture another 8% in facilitating or overseeing the city's third-party program and measurement and reporting that on the city's behalf to Cal Recycle. And then if you were to count the CND, that would represent another 15% in diversion. I think that's all of the questions that I heard come up in a rapid-fire manner, but I am here, the whole local team is here, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Any more public comment in chambers?
Can't believe I'm talking on all of these, but one of the challenges that you have in, you know, for example, going to residents and have them make sure they comply with everything, if you've got an apartment building, there's no way you're going to get every single tenant to comply. I live in the sand section. Our trash cans are outback. There's always people walking by throwing stuff into the cans in the recycle that doesn't necessarily belong there, unless you start locking up your trash, and that becomes very impractical. I've got no place to put, you know, multiple bins in my stupid three-foot setback, you know, because you put the bins in there, you can't even walk past them to put the trash in. So it becomes very, very complicated in this area. And then I've seen people take their food waste, they put it into a plastic bag, throw it in the green bin. It's like, does that not defeat the purpose? But then, again, if you have a separate bin where you're throwing food waste into it, that's going to build up and get really nasty over time, and you're going to have a lot of bugs and pest problems around your property. So there's a lot of unintended consequences. And you're going to have a very, very difficult time enforcing, because you can't control a lot of factors. And we don't want to put this on all the residents. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any more public comments in chamber? If not, are there any comments on Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
In which case, I will close. Public comment? Counsel, any, let's start and see if there's any further questions of counsel. Madam Mayor, do you have any questions or at this table?
Well, I'm fading here a little bit, but I see the recommendation is for us to discuss WM's request to adjust solid waste diversion and provide direction. So are we, are you thinking that we will come to some consensus on direction to give to staff tonight on this item?
Well, let's see. I would propose to hear what other council members might have in the form of questions or initial comments. I know I have an initial comment, but I want to wait for my colleagues. I see Councilmember Franklin with my just being here.
Sure, thank you. So where did the 50%? We saw that Redondo's said 75%, and we said 50%. Where did that come from? Is that our own standards, or is that a state standard?
It was negotiated. Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. Anna Public Works. When the RFP process is taking place, the city includes a list of facts that the hauler needs to provide. And so the haulers that proposed were asked, what can you achieve with diversion? And that is the number that Athens provided initially was 75. And then they independently submitted a request to Redondo Beach, saying, we want to request to lower to 50. Same thing with us. We asked the haulers, what could you provide? Waste Management's proposal was 46%. On award night, it was negotiated to 50. And then they submitted a request, or they have requested to reduce that amount.
Okay. So it was basically us for the city's goal of, you know, eliminating landfill?
Yes, we asked, we let them know in the RFP package that there would be a diversion requirement, and then we asked the haulers to provide what percentage diversion they would achieve in, if they were awarded the contract.
Did we have any idea what our diversion goal was before the contract with Waste Management?
It was 50% in the 2011 contract as well.
It was as well.
Actually, I take that back. 2011 was an interesting one. Waste Management proposed a stair step. I think it may have started at 50 or 57, and then increased by one percentage point each year of the agreement. But they were not able to achieve that in the 2011 contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what was the penalty for that?
That liquidated damage, that was a council item that I believe it was in 2017 or 2018. To pull up the details, I can't recall, but it did go to council. I can provide that information.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And I'm sorry, just those numbers again. It started at what, and it ended up where?
In the 2011 contract, I believe it started at 55 or 57, and then increased one percentage point every year. And then for the agreement that we're in right now, which became effective July 1, 2020, they proposed 46. But on the award night, it was negotiated with council that they would achieve 50, so it went up four percentage points. And then Mr. Lee went over their performance to date.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shirel.
Yeah, thank you. Anna, don't sit down. Sorry. You're all refuse all-knowing. So, quick question. So we're hearing from WM that they cannot achieve greater than 37%. And I don't want to, you know, put this onus, you know, on our residents. It's too cumbersome. Talk to me about what this third-party option is and what the cities, you know, what is best practice and what do cities typically do for the third party, which I heard that might increase it by potentially 8%? So what do other cities do, and is it best practice for us to include or not include the third party?
I can, yeah, let me bump it to Leif, because most cities, as I mentioned before, most cities don't require their hauler to meet a specific diversion rate in the franchise agreement.
Thank you.
And so there is a small circle. The requirement from 2011, if you may recall, going back that far, it was really kind of birthed through the era of the Environmental Task Force and the city wanting to be a leader in environmental practices. And so it was not, it was not unusual for the city to want to set itself apart in that respect.
Thank you. Thank you for the background. Yes.
Good evening, Leif, is that? So let me make one thing clear. Third-party diversion or source reduction or other sources of recycling that are not taking place within the Waste Management contract?
Yeah.
The city still gets credit for all of that, because what the state counts is disposal. They measure what goes into the landfill. So it doesn't matter whether it's scavengers stealing recyclables at the curbside, or however waste gets diverted, it counts towards the city's overall diversion calculation. Because the city isn't actually adding up, or the state is not adding up recycling amounts. They did a study, you know, 20 years ago, where they did that one time. They added to the disposal, and they said that's what's generated in the city. And then after that, they opted for population growth. So the only thing they're measuring is what's disposed in a landfill. So these other proposals to add third-party recycling or diversion to the calculation or to add CND recycling by third parties, that's all already happening. And so to try to then quantify it, to add it to the Waste Management diversion for purposes of the appearance of getting to 50, I would recommend against that. It adds a whole nother set of accounting that's very, very difficult to do, and there's really no benefit to doing it. And in the end, Waste Management would still be doing, you know, what they're doing in the 30s. So if you're comfortable with that, then I would just approve that rather than try to add these other accounting mechanisms to make it look like another number. The city is getting the benefit from all of those things, and the city on the whole may be above 50% when you take all of those things in. But I wouldn't change a franchise agreement to do that.
And that's why I asked a question, and you're the subject matter expert, so thank you for saying that for the record.
Most of the third-party diversion is, our customers are selling and getting paid for their recyclables, principally cardboard. Cardboard's worth something. So that's why you have it, and you're allowed to sell it to anybody that you want.
Yeah, just so looking at it, now, I'll wrap this up real quick. I know we're kind of beating this up, but you're saying CND, I heard CND was about 15%. Third-party's at 8%. That's 23%. That puts us, the 37%, that puts us almost to 60% citywide.
I mean, those are Waste Management's estimates.
Right. Again, estimates, correct. So we are meeting somewhat with the entire city versus the.
And you're also part of LARA, right? So you don't even report as an individual city. It can't go, but cities that are not part of LARA, I can just go look on the state's website, see where they are on overall basis. Can't do that for Manhattan.
Got you. And lastly, just for the record, about a 37% diversion rate is about $125,000 in punitive monetary, I think annually.
I don't have that.
No. That's fine. That's all I got. Thank you.
I'm next, and maybe I ask this of Anna, and if you need to hand me over to the director or Leif, welcome. I'm trying to maybe queue up what our policy options are. Policy option one is simply to demand that Waste Management honor the contract that it negotiated at 50%, because that is the contract we have, at least until 2027, with three one-year extensions, correct?
Correct.
Option two is to simply indicate that, well, the laws changed and business practices have changed, and as a result, Waste Management can't meet its 50% diversion. All it can meet based on staff's assessment with the help of our contractor is 37%. That's right? So we just simply waive the delta of 13%. That would be the second choice, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm still thinking about a third choice, is we negotiated on behalf of our city's commercial and residential customers an expectation of a diversion rate. Hard to meet. There has to be some valuation to that in the form of some credit to the customers that might, at a minimum, be less than the liquidated damages, the penalty provision. And I'm just wondering, how would we even assess that? Whether it's in the form of some credit? There was a reference made earlier to waiver of a CPI increase. How might the city, if directed by council, if it's a council majority, analyze what the value is that we've lost with that 13% difference? Thank you.
I'd like to answer that question. So as our consultant mentioned, the major driver in the reduction in the diversion rate and the major change in the regulatory landscape has been the elimination of transformation. There's certainly cost savings that Waste Management has realized, because they're no longer incurring those costs, and there's certainly a value to that. And so, and that's something that, if directed by the council, we could work with our consultant and Waste Management to determine what that value is. And potentially, that could be something that would equate to a rate reduction. Maybe there's credits for additional services that we could get, and that might be a middle ground between liquidated damages and simply just agreeing to everything that's been requested. Additionally, if that value, potentially, if the council didn't want to apply that to a rate decrease, maybe it's something we can negotiate with Waste Management that, let's just say for sake of argument, it was $100,000 in value. Is there additional programs that Waste Management could implement that would help further our solid waste goals? So that's probably had, that's how I'm answering that one.
Thank you. That's helpful. Mayor Horwath, did you have a question or comment?
No, it's comment time. I think this is, I mean, this is the biggest contract that we let here in the city, as Councilmember Shirelly had mentioned. So as I mentioned before, I was on the subcommittee the last, not the last time, but whatever year that was. And it was, I was also on the Environmental Task Force, and I stand by the goal of high diversion. But as the representative from WM pointed out, there's been so many changes, one of them being, you know, China and the National Source Program, which really drastically changed the market and the ability of people to recycle and, you know, to find that, because there was no value anymore. Nobody could do it as cheaply as China, and China wasn't taking any of our trash to recycle, right? So I'm focusing on that, because I know it's troubling to all of us and our residents that Waste Management's coming back to us since, you know, oh, feels like they're breaking our promise and they never lived up to their goals. Well, I'm sitting here saying, I think the goals were not achievable. I mean, I don't think they, I mean, they might have been achievable if China hadn't implemented their recycling, their own stuff program, maybe. But we're going back and forth over this thing, and it just, it seems clear to me that it's not. And we're not allowing it at the third party, again, I'm fading, I can't hear the words, recycling diversion. Here's the thing, there's also two things going on when we talk about diversion rates. The city has an obligation to meet certain diversion rates set by the state, right? So we're getting near 50, because we can include the third party, right? We can do all that. But Waste Management doesn't get that same. They don't get to use that, the Target, the Bonds, and the Ralphs, Costco trash. So to me, I'm getting used to, or maybe I'm past the concept that, wow, now it's really changed. Waste Management's coming back and saying they can't do this. I don't think they can, and I don't think we should ask them to. So I don't know, then, from a policy standpoint, where the motion is there, but I don't, I don't think it's possible. And I think, I think, I don't want to, I don't want to fine our residents for recycling incorrectly. I know that I am pretty careful in my house, and my husband's really careful. But I just know how many bins of recycling is contaminated on our alley. And I don't want to be the lady who's going around looking at everybody's recycle bins. I'm not quite that crazy yet. But I also don't want to fine people. So that's where, I think that point is that we really have to get real about that. That's my opening.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Shirel.
Yeah, and I want to try to wrap this up, and I appreciate the mayor pointing those things out. And for me, you know, I'm hearing WM cannot, you know, meet the 50%. They can't, you know, they're saying 37% is the cap. And I like the dialogue that we had with Director Lee with, you know, if there's any other monetary things that we can do. So I'd like to work that into a motion, but I could see reducing, you know, the diversion rate maybe to some number that there's a consensus on council, maybe 40%, just to keep it, you know, keep it going. But that's all I got.
Great. Councilmember Franklin.
It was a lofty goal, probably, when it was presented. I'm trying to put myself in the frame of mind, as I was asking the questions back in 2011, 2012. And we remember that foreign companies, China in particular, you know, took a lot of that, took a lot of that trash and recycled it. And ironically, it would come back to us in the form of either packaging or toys or whatever that they did. So, you know, that was good. I mean, we all have the visions of the bottles at the beautiful, you know, tropical paradise island. You know, I read something the other day that the Philippines is like the highest concentration of, what do you call it, with plastics in the water and things like that. So you want to encourage them to get that stuff out of the water and being used. But, you know, the world changes. We know that. I'd be inclined to bring down the amount. I don't think. I don't think, you know, I was looking here at like splitting the difference. I had the calculation here somewhere, but it's 13 tons is the difference. So it would be about six tons. So 30, 37 plus six would be about 42. I don't want it to go, you know, to where they are now. I still want to have that incentive there. But if we could go ahead and maybe split the difference and get some of these other programs that Director Lee was talking about, I think we can come to an agreement on that. Thank you.
Good idea.
Councilmember Tarnay?
So, thank you. I would agree with that. I think, you know, I think there's a balance that has to be struck, and times have changed, and we need to recognize that. But we also need to recognize, you know, what our, what we bargained for on behalf of our residents. I'd like to have us explore the value of the transformation credit. And then also, and to bridge that gap, also explore increasing services to residents, options that we can offer to our residents so that they feel this is the price that we negotiated and we were supposed to get this level of service or this level of diversion, and we're not meeting that. So what is it that we can get in return? Thank you.
For my comments, and then I would entertain a motion. And that is, I think there is an emerging consensus to acknowledge that waste management is unable to deliver on the 50% diversion commitment that they made to council, but to recognize why that's the case. It's the case because the law has changed, because there are changes in business practices, and because it is clear that we have issues with our commercial waste contributors, shall we say, customers, where we might need to explore what we can do to try and increase those numbers. I would welcome some form of motion that allows us, as was indicated, to receive some of the value for our customers for what they agreed to, for what we on their behalf agreed to in our waste hauling contract in 2019. That is, how do we value the lost diversion? And as is indicated by our director, there might be some reciprocal way that waste management can provide that value to our customers. But there has to be some monetary amount here. There's a value here that we're not getting for the purpose of the contract that we sent out to bid, that other bidders also submitted bids for and weren't able to meet. So is there a motion to proceed that in whatever way council would like to? I'll make the motion just to get it started, consistent with what I just said, to direct staff to, one, analyze and confirm that 37% is the diversion rate that waste management claims is all they can produce. Confirm that. Two, analyze what might be a valuation of the lost diversion that they're unable to provide. I heard from Councilmember Franklin a request to examine if there couldn't be a splitting of the difference, but I think we would want staff to explore what their maximum diversion rate is, and that would be included in that analysis. Is there anything else that council members would like to add in the analysis by city staff before coming back? Or do you want direction to negotiate these points?
What is the very last thing you said?
Want to confirm how we're setting this up. Is it what our position is, or does staff want to analyze this and come back to council?
I think we're going to analyze it within the parameters that you've established, and we'll come back with some recommendations that should be within those guidelines.
That would be my motion. I do see a second from Councilmember Cherillion. Is that the motion that you'd like to second?
Yes, I concur.
Okay. If there's no further comments by council or the mayor, call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cherillion?
Yes.
Mayor Horwath?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lesser?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Thank you for all who are sitting here, waiting for other items to come up. We will now move on to item number 13. This is a consideration of a resolution approving participation in the Clean Power Alliance's REACH Code Program for Building and Transportation Electrification and Grant Funding Opportunity and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement. At the outset, I do want to make one comment. There was an indication by residents or requests that I recuse myself by virtue of being the city council's delegate to the Clean Power Alliance along with the mayor. I simply wanted to indicate to those residents that have that concern, I am the city council's delegate to that body of which our city is a member. I have no financial interest in the outcome of this. I did not participate in the formation of this program. I have serious questions about, questions as you will see, but I plan to continue to participate in this item because I do not have a comment. Acting Community Development Director Heiss.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem. I'd like to introduce Brittany Cochran-Moens, Environmental Programs Administrator, to present on the side of.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. So we are here tonight to, or I'm here tonight to present an opportunity to receive grant funds for participation in the Clean Power Alliance's REACH Code Program. So for by way of background, the city joined the Clean Power Alliance in 2017 to bring clean energy and local benefits to the city. The Clean Power Alliance is a community choice aggregation joint powers authority that works with Southern California Edison to provide renewable energy to its members. As a nonprofit organization, the Clean Power Alliance's revenues are reinvested back into their communities, such as Manhattan Beach as a member, through rebates and programs such as the program being presented to you this evening. The city has the opportunity to participate in this program, the REACH Code Program, to receive technical assistance to explore potential REACH codes for the city. A REACH code is a local building energy code that reaches beyond the state minimum requirements for energy efficiency in building and construction. REACH codes are an important tool for jurisdictions to meet their own climate goals, and they allow jurisdictions to decide on standards that meet their specific needs and interests. REACH codes can address a variety of methods to improve energy efficiency, such as through the use of electric appliances, electric sources for space or water heating, solar panel minimum requirements, EV electric vehicle charging capacity, insulation and other air sealing and weatherization efforts, and more sustainable roofing materials, just to name a few examples. This program comes at no cost to the city and includes an opportunity to receive $12,500 in funds simply for participating in the program. A decision to adopt any proposed REACH code is not required in order to participate, nor is it required to receive the funds. Continuing a little bit of background, in September of 2019, city council directed staff and the now dissolved Sustainability Task Force to discuss options and provide recommendations for increasing energy efficiency of new buildings through a REACH code. In October of 2021, staff and Sustainability Task Force findings and recommendations were then presented to city council, who then decided, directed staff to adopt the current 2022 California Building Standards Code, which remains in effect until December 31st, 2025, without increasing efficiency requirements, and to continue to further explore a REACH code, particularly a request to explore REACH codes that address solar on new buildings as well as municipal facilities. So since the city's adoption of the 2022 California Building Standards Codes, there have been advancements and new developments with the Building Energy Efficiency Standards Code, also known as the Energy Code or Part Six of Title 24. Every three years, the California Energy Commission develops Energy Code updates for new construction and renovations to existing buildings. After the California Energy Commission adopts these standards, they are then submitted to the California Building Standards Commission for approval, and along with other changes, are then incorporated into the California Building Standards Code. In September of 2024, sorry, I think I went ahead too fast. In September of 2024, the California Energy Commission adopted the updated Energy Code, which will go into effect January 1st, 2026, as part of the 2025 California Buildings Standards Code. Every three years following state's adoption of these updated building standards codes, cities are then required to update their building code to meet or exceed these requirements. The California Energy Commission also publishes model building code language for cities and counties that choose to adopt REACH codes that go beyond these requirements. So just a quick overview of the 2025 Energy Code that will be into effect January 1st of next year. So this focuses on four key areas: expanding the use of electric heat pump technology for space and water heating; encouraging electric-ready buildings to set up owners to use cleaner electric heating and cooking; expanding solar photovoltaic or PV system and battery storage standards; and strengthening space conditioning control standards and ventilation standards to improve air quality. So CPAs or Clean Power Alliance's REACH Code Program provides technical assistance to participating cities in this program in the research and development of local energy codes at no cost. Participating in this program does not commit the city to adopting a REACH code, and it does not require that a REACH code be adopted to receive funding. This funding is available on a first-come, first-served basis and is distributed to cities after a REACH code ordinance has been presented to council for consideration, regardless of whether or not this proposed REACH code is adopted. So technical assistance provided is provided with TRC companies, a contracted technical consultant that has been implemented and partnered with CPA. In partnership with them, they will provide technical support, provide model codes, conduct community outreach, and provide other resources in assisting the city in conducting this research and development. Should the city choose to participate in this REACH code program, staff will work closely with the CPA and TRC to evaluate and draft a REACH code ordinance that enhances the 2025 Building Standards Code. And it will further explore building energy efficiency standards, such as rooftop solar on new buildings and municipal facilities as requested by the city council in October of 2021. TRC will also support staff with education at stakeholder events, such as workshops and meetings, to engage with the public and receive their input. TRC's services will also address areas that are outside of city staff's expertise, including conducting a cost effectiveness study to ensure that any code enhancements proposed are cost effective and do not cause any undue burden. TRC will then incorporate all community and stakeholder feedback to fine tune a model code and take this code back to the city council for consideration. City council will have, city council will have the opportunity to review and propose any changes to any proposed REACH code. So this evening, my apologies, this evening, we are seeking direction. City council may take no action. In this scenario, staff will opt out of the program as well as the grant opportunity on behalf of the city, or city council may approve the city's participation in the program and authorize an agreement with the CPA. Thank you. I'm here for your questions.
Great. Thank you, Brittany. I'll start off. I'm one who is highly skeptical of prohibitions against anything other than electrical appliances. I'm concerned about any prohibition or requirement of just using electrical appliances. So let me confirm what this opportunity is. What this opportunity is, as I understand it, is to get grant funding to help staff explore what options we have within our jurisdiction to require greater energy efficiency. But we're under no obligation to adopt any of them. And in fact, we can exclude certain ones with our direction tonight. Is that right?
Correct.
That's helpful for starting off as to what this is about and what it's not. Thank you. Council, excuse me, Mayor Horwath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Yeah, I appreciate you saying that. I mean, we received a number, a number of emails. Let's just say that, you know, tonight on the agenda, don't vote to ban gas appliances. And I was kind of shocked because is that, that's not one of the options tonight, is it? I mean, is that on, is that one of our debates, to just ban gas appliances tonight? I don't see that.
You cannot see perhaps, Mayor, but there's a blank expression.
Would you like me to answer that?
Would you like that?
Yeah, I can't, I'm sorry. I have to change my view, I think. I'm so sorry. Well, I can't, anyway, yeah, is that in the staff report that we should, that we're being asked to ban gas appliances?
Great question, and thank you for the opportunity to clarify. That is not in the staff report. What is known as a moratorium on gas is a well-known and popular form of a REACH code. It is not one that staff plans to pursue without direction from city council. And as I mentioned, there are a lot of other varieties to look into, including solar, EV charging, increased insulation, weatherization. There is a lot of options.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Really appreciate that. And as Mayor Protem indicated, yeah, I'm not that interested in pursuing that because I have a big old gas stove, and so be it. All right, I have another question, though, and I don't know if it's going to be for you or for our city attorney. So let me try to ask this and try to sound intelligent. So the California Energy Commission adopts the Energy Code, and, you know, there were these key focus areas that you mentioned. As you, this grant, could this grant, and it's part of the research that you do, and, you know, it's this community outreach, so you might go do community outreach, and people say, absolutely no, you know, don't ban this, but maybe do this. Would there also be research? Could there be, would it be important for us to have our own codes and ordinances so that if the California Energy Commission or the state legislature, for example, adopts something, we already have something in place that maybe supersedes it? Like when we did with the cannabis, when cannabis, maybe that's because it was a proposition. So that, that's kind of the area. We had our own cannabis policy on the books, so we were kind of safe and protected. So again, my question is, would any of this help us, like, protect ourselves?
Thank you, Mayor Horwath. This is Ryan Heiss, acting community development director. I can answer that question for you. The state codes are a minimum and are required to be adopted by the city.
Okay.
The city every three years, you'll see me again in a tie up here. We adopt them every three years, but they are minimum, and we do enhance them as needed for specific reasons. Because we're close to beach, because we're in earthquake prone regions. The Energy Code is a voluntary set of increases, and that's why it's a REACH code, so slightly different.
All right. I really appreciate that clarification so much. Thank you. Okay, those are my questions for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Franklin?
Yes, thank you. Let's see. We went to, we signed up with CPA in 2017, 18?
That's correct. It was active in 2018, but we did join the Joint Powers Authority with CPA in 2017.
Okay. So that's been, again, my, so much math tonight. So that's been, that's been eight years. Now granted, I may ask some questions that people aren't aware of because we've had a lot of new people move into the city and things like that. So the primary function of the Clean Power Alliance, is it to provide electricity, clean electricity?
So to my understanding, the primary function is they work with Southern California Edison. They purchase clean energy, depending on what percentage the city and its customers have opted into. They purchase renewable and clean energy on our behalf, and it's delivered through Southern California Edison.
Right. Okay, over their lines.
Correct.
And from what I understand, residents didn't physically opt in, they were opted in, right?
Correct.
By a vote of the council at the time. Okay. So everybody got into, automatically got signed up for this. Let's see. There was a question about, you know, are we talking about, you know, banning gas appliances? And is it in the staff report? And I don't know. I'm looking at the staff report, which is page 243, and it says the 2025 Energy Code focuses on four key areas in newly constructed homes and businesses, which is expanding the use of electric heat pump technology for space and water heating. So is that typically electric? That's supplied by electricity as opposed to gas?
Okay, I can take that. So that's referring to what the next California Minimum Record Code is going to require. Typically, right now, there's electrification. Typically, right now, there's electrification available, so even if you put gas into the residents and have gas stoves, water heater, you still have to have it electric ready. That's already in the code today.
Sure.
So what that slide is saying is that in the next code cycle, they're going to continue that encouragement. The requirements may change, but we haven't seen the code yet, so we don't know what they will be. But that's not what the reach codes would address, that's the minimum requirements from California.
Okay, and we have some input into that, right? I mean, don't they?
In general, in California, there are code adoption boards that you can join.
Yeah, okay. But then to continue, it says, "which consumes less energy and produces fewer emissions than gas-powered units." So item number two there is encouraging electric-ready buildings to set up owners to use cleaner electric heating and cooking. So is that saying that they want you to go to electric appliances and give up gas appliances?
So it could be taken that that's being implied. That language is directly from the Energy Code fact sheet. That's their overview of what the changes are going to be for the next set of codes that will come into play in 2026. Again, as Ryan mentioned, those are already either in place or that's where the ones that are existing that they're going to enhance. So the Energy Code does place preference on electrical, electric appliances in favor of gas. However, a reach code doesn't have to enforce that, and it's probably unlikely at this time that the building Energy Code itself is going to enforce that as an actual prohibition. It's not something that this report is saying that we will do.
So looking into the future, if you, if these reach codes are adopted, then if you have a gas appliance, do they want you to remove it immediately?
No, that's a great question. So there are two types of codes. There are codes that apply to new construction, new buildings, in which case that is where if there was a requirement, it would be in the new buildings and new construction. And then there are codes that target renovations, and they usually have a percentage threshold, for example, if, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but for example, if you are renovating more than 50%, that might kick in these codes.
Oh, renovating, yeah.
Yes, so for renovations. So if you're doing a small bathroom remodel that's 10% of a renovation, they're not going to require that you go into your kitchen then and pull out your stove and replace it or pull out your heater and replace it with electric. In terms of retrofitting what you already have, I haven't seen any proposed codes that require that.
Okay, but what about, so you're, you need to get a new gas dryer. Will you be able to put a new gas dryer in? You'd be able to get a permit to install a new gas dryer?
Currently, yes, the way the codes are, yes.
But is the reach code, are these reach codes looking into that as far as?
That is an option that can be looked into with council direction.
Let's see. So, and again, you know, as far as in the staff report, the next paragraph, it does say a potential reach code ordinance may include, but is not limited to, any one of the following, encouraging or requiring the use of electric appliances. Okay? Do you know why there is this push? I mean, what is, what are the failings? It seems like there's, they're saying that there's failings with gas appliances. What are they? I mean, there's, and there's, I got something in here, it says 70% of, in California, 70% of the appliances are gas appliances.
That's a great question. So the state as a whole is moving towards clean energy and green energy. Part of that is phasing out older gas energy and in favor of more electric. There have been some studies that suggest that there are carbon monoxide emissions that could be potentially harmful to health. That all depends, you know, some people, even in my family, I know people who leave the stove open and on and use that as a heat source. That's going to release a lot of those fumes. That may not be a standard practice, but those fumes do exist, and as far as I know, the way that that technology and that equipment is set up is meant to capture those fumes. But there are concerns that it could be a potential health hazard in terms of an air pollutant in addition to just the energy efficiency as well.
But don't we have codes that require ventilation?
Yes, and that is part of the Energy Code as well.
Okay, so that could be mitigated, those fumes could be mitigated by the required ventilation?
Correct, yes.
Gotcha. It's, it says that to date, the cities of West Hollywood, Beverly Hills, Ohio, Rolling Hills Estates, and Santa Monica have elected to participate in the Reach Code Program. Are they CPA?
Yes.
Clean Power Alliance?
Yes, so those are the cities.
When it says the program, it means this grant program?
Correct.
It just seems like Clean Power Alliance provides electricity, and this seems to be moving people towards electric appliances and thereby buying more of their electricity or becoming more dependent on their electricity. Is there an issue with that? I mean, has there been pushback on that?
So some reach codes, such as the electrification, which favors electric appliances instead of gas, can result in increased energy usage. However, there are a number of reach codes that can be pursued that actually reduce energy usage, such as increased insulation. So with more insulation, you might not need to run your air conditioner or your heating more often, that will actually bring the energy use down. So there are a variety of different approaches, and with direction, we can pursue specific approaches and not pursue others.
So we've heard about the city of Berkeley ruling, where they actually are going for a gas moratorium. Was, was the CPA involved with that in terms of providing a reach code assistance with Berkeley and other cities that proposed a natural gas moratorium, which was?
I don't believe so. I'm not, I don't know all of the members of the CPA, but I'm pretty sure they're all focused in the Southern California area. There are other community choice aggregation energy providers throughout the state. They may have similar programs. Many cities and jurisdictions also pursue and adopt their own reach codes without the support of a CCA, such as CPA, they're one of them. But I don't believe that the CPA has member agencies that are that far north, to my knowledge.
Just to give our staff member a break, I believe Clean Power Alliance is based in only Los Angeles and Ventura counties. That's it.
And Riverside, I think, now too.
Riverside, too.
Okay, but, but they're called, I mean, what are they called?
Community Choice Aggregators.
Was a community choice, whatever, aggregator, was that involved up in, up in Berkeley?
That I do not know, but I can look into that and get back to you.
Okay. So talking about where CPA is, they're, they're in Los Angeles and Ventura County. There, I think when we were analyzing them or considering them, there were 31 members back in 2020? I wouldn't expect you to know that, but I, you know, I went back and I watched where we decided to go ahead and turn everybody on to automatically opt them in to the Clean Power Alliance. I believe there were 31 member cities in 2020. There's a total of 98 cities and also unincorporated county areas in LA County and Ventura County. Have they increased their number of cities? I mean, I know, I think now they're at 35?
Yes, to my knowledge, they are currently at 35.
Okay, but in four years, now almost five years, they went from 30, 31 to 35. So that's only four cities that have gone in. Okay, well, that's all the questions I have now.
Great. Thank Councilmember Chirillo.
Thank you. Brittany, good job presenting, tough topic. I got a couple of questions for interim Director Heiss. So, give you some more screen time with the tie, so. And you already answered these, but I just want to reconfirm, and these will be quick. In 2022, we adopted those California building standards, and you said it's every, about three years, and we're probably engaged in that in the spring or fall of this year, or?
We'll get the codes in July, and we'll start working on that and coming back to council in the October, November timeframe.
Perfect. And would you say that in those codes, that there is built-in green initiatives in those codes, in the 2022 codes?
We're expecting that, but we have not yet seen them.
Right, but in our current codes, there is green initiatives. So, so would it be safe to say, in your opinion, that the 2025 codes that we get, not making any assumptions, just in your subject matter expert in the area, that they'll probably enhance those green codes?
We do expect them to.
Okay. So all the questions I have for now.
Acting Director Heiss, I have a follow-up question to an email exchange that you and I had with regard to whether our city would want to explore better disaster mitigating building materials and directing that. Is that something that could be integrated as part of the energy efficiency measures that might be explored with this grant, particularly following the Southern California fires?
Yes, we would definitely look to the consultant to help us to see if we explore that. There is a push currently with disaster recovery, instead of being the recovery mode to actually be sustainable and not, right, fail during the disaster. So we can see if that would apply to these reach codes, and that's where, you know, the consultant could help us navigate, you know, different methods to determine what fits within the realm of the reach code.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Turner.
I just, because we've received so many emails about a potential gas ban, and I was really concerned when I read the staff report and I went back and I was like, did I miss something? I just want to confirm that we are not making any decisions on gas, on banning gas appliances, and to the contrary, that we can actually lead you all on your exploration of what we can do as a city to become more sustainable. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, no decisions tonight, just, you know, direction on whether or not we want to join the group, and then direction on what types of reach codes we want to explore.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you, Councilmember. So with no further questions by council or the mayor, I'll move to public comment on this item. Are there any public comments in the council chamber on this item?
Sorry, guys.
We got an extra seat up here, you know.
Careful there. Stefan Kampa here once again. Great presentation, thank you for the clarification. I guess my question is, is, you know, what, to recap, what I heard was, is we have a third party per se, who's going to be biased, who's going to come in, try to influence us to do reach codes, to actually create building codes that we don't have to take. That's my understanding, and that they want to help us define what those are based on their view of what's going forward. My question is, do we need that? What's the value of that to us as a city? Do we need that? That could be that, if that's where we wanted to go as a community, yes, let's go achieve that. The sense I have is, no, we don't want to do that. The second value could be the education for our folks who are in the building and planning department. So, and then the third might be is giving us a view of what the future might hold when California and some of our leaders try to dictate, dictate this to us. Those might be the values that come out of this to us. So that's just one piece of it. Sorry, I don't have these in sequence necessarily. The $12,500, that's a net based on the numbers here, I don't think that should influence us in any sort of way. The next question would be, is really for Ryan and crew, do we have the staff time? Do we know what the obligation will be for us to participate in this? How long is it going to be? The second question would be is, do we actually need the help from the outside to do this? Do we have this knowledge already or not? Okay? And then what I really liked, what we talked about here is, can we define the outcomes we want? And if so, that's the direction that I suggest we give them if we move forward with the study, to say, what are the options? What do we see as the issues and what's going forward if we decide to go in that with this? Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments in the chamber?
Yes, I'd like to quickly point out, it is clearly a biased organization, and if it's backed by Edison, guess what? The ones who are going to benefit the most, because it's more electricity, they get more To give you an example, I was talking to somebody who built a property over in Hermosa Beach, and they were required to put in a $30,000 water recapture system. They're on a 2,700 square foot lot, they might have 100 square feet of yard to water. That's got about a 200-year ROI on it. $30,000 water recapture system to water their yard on an extremely small lot. That's what these organizations push you towards, really bad decisions, and in doing things. For example, when they brought up 50% rule, I learned what 50% rule was long ago when I was thinking about adding a second story on my house, and I didn't know at the time my house was built beyond the setback. And they said to me, oh, if you want to do that, we're going to make sure you use up your 50% to do the structural, and then you have to wait five years, then when you want to put the second story on, we're going to make you do it again and again and again to move your house. So I learned the hard way with the 50% rules, so I can imagine what people are going to go through to try and replace an appliance, and what the city is going to do to them. So you're going to put a lot of tools in hands that are just not going to work well for a lot of people. So I don't think it's a real good idea to join this thing because they have to have an agenda, they have to do something to accomplish it, and I don't think that's going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in council chambers that'd like to comment on this item? Please. Careful, careful.
Hi, Rudy Krapchikapa, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members. I just want to make a comment, if we have to, if we're, it's more of a question, I suppose, if every three years, this is the third year, and we're looking to opt into this again, is that what I'm understanding? Or, or we, but we were already in it, so we were getting the, we're not already in it, I'm getting head shakes, got it. So we're looking to potentially opt in. And I guess I have to say that I do, I do worry about, you know, hands over us. We already have Sacramento over us and pushing us to make changes that we have to abide by, to get suggestions and urgents from another agency like Southern California Edison. They are obviously a little biased to have us move towards electricity because that's what they're selling. I just worry about a little, a little too much overreach, and so can we consider that when you're making your decision this evening? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other members of the public in chambers? If not, any members of the public wish to speak on Zoom?
We do, Michael Jenkins.
I'm sorry, name, please?
Michael Jenkins.
Thank you.
Hello, council, Michael Jenkins, 47-year resident of Manhattan Beach. I got an email this afternoon that said that I needed to urge the city council not to ban gas appliances. And so I went online and I looked at this agenda item, and I read it very carefully, and I didn't see anything in there about banning gas appliances. And so it seemed to me that somebody was spreading disinformation in the city and encouraging people to come down and oppose something that wasn't even on the agenda and wasn't even being considered. In fact, I was told by the source of this email that this was a last-minute item that was thrown on the agenda without notice, which obviously is not true because your notices are posted 72 hours in advance. So I don't appreciate getting disinformation, and honestly, listening to Councilmember Franklin's comments, the tenor of them, the content of them, I'm beginning to wonder if he's the source of this disinformation. The fact of the matter is that this is a no-brainer. This is a no-cost item to consider a reach code that would encourage energy efficiency in new construction, purely voluntary. What's the value of it? It would reduce carbon emissions, it would advance the community's clean air goals, make our air cleaner. And you, the city council, would be completely in charge of what goes into that reach code. You're not being dictated to by Sacramento. Your building code is a local code, and you, the city council, get the final say as to what goes in it, what you want to encourage. There's no obligations, there's no mandates, there's nothing that says that you have to ban gas appliances. I don't even know why you're having that conversation, why that question's even come up. The fact is that all this does is have you prepare a reach code that will come back to the city council for consideration, and it can include incentives, and it can be completely voluntary. And what's the benefit of it? The benefit is clean air. The benefit is energy efficiency. Right above me, where I sit right now, I have 40. Right above me, where I sit right now, I have 42 solar panels.
Mr. Jenkins, can you finish your thought and then we'll move on? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll finish my thought. I have 42 solar panels and two electric cars. And honestly, let's be clear about CPA. Councilmember Franklin, you know that any resident and any property owner in Manhattan Beach can opt out. It's very easy to opt out. It's not mandatory. If you don't want to be part of CPA, you don't have to. So I would encourage the council to adopt the resolution and proceed. Come up with a reach code. It's entirely in your discretion. Let's do something that's good for the environment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Are there any other members of the public on Zoom?
Yes, we have Lee.
Hi, this is Lee Phillips. I had a couple of questions, and I'll be honest with you in full transparency. I did have some questions about the council members being on the CPA. And I think it is prudent to list that on the documents. I mean, that's just transparency. It doesn't mean I'm being accusatory, it's just transparency. And then what are the fiscal implications to homeowners and businesses to adopt reach standards? The dollar amount? I know people talk about what feels good and all, but what's the dollar amount to implement any reach standards? And then how much carbon emissions would be saved by enacting such standards? Again, people talk about all these feel-good stuff, but what are the numerical value? And that's how we should be looking at things. What does it cost and what does it do? And then public outreach. The public outreach that was done was five to six years ago. And that's, now we're in 2025, that's a different world. And we really need to have public outreach in proximity to the city council discussion because it does have implications to residents. And, you know, all these going beyond the standards has implications for making the city affordable. Right? We've had taxes every year, and now we have more. And it is a tax, right? And then, so the city wants businesses and residents to enact these standards. What is the city itself doing to do for environmental concerns? I mean, Lot 3. I mentioned Lot 3 in December. I mean, there was no mention of solar panels on Lot 3 or batteries on Lot 3 or any type of environmental concerns for Lot 3. If you really are concerned about the environment, let's look at Lot 3 and what the city can do for it. And maybe the city lead by example in terms of environmental standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any further?
Next, we have Heather Kim.
Hi. LOL, even if this is not necessarily a gas ban on the agenda, we aren't dumb, we know which way this train is going. I was a business owner for many years. I had a grocery store. And we had so many power outages. And we lost thousands of dollars that we could not recoup all through insurance. And I just remember being so frustrated that the electricity would go out. There was really no rhyme or reason to it. There wasn't like a specific season. It was just boom, the gas is out. So, I mean, the electricity is out. And we'd have to get backup generators. You know, we used calculators in the beginning when our registers weren't working. And we lost a lot of refrigerated items. We didn't have as many power outages here at my house on the east side. However, we still had, you know, quite a few. And it's something that we shouldn't have to learn to live with, but we kind of are. We're being conditioned to believe that this is, you know, normal. And now California wants to impose this kind of dumb thinking onto all of us. It does not make any sense. And I know which way this is going, okay? It's very obvious. The electric grid in its current state is obviously not reliable. Okay? So there are lots of concerns. It's not disinformation. It's, these are actual concerns. Just because it's not on the agenda item to ban all gas, you know, product does not mean that that's not where it's headed. So let's not kid ourselves here. I remember when there was a plastic bag ban and that was to help the environment. And what happened is the plastic bags just got thicker and created actually more trash and more pollution. So that was kind of a hilarious fail there, too. So this is kind of just yet another one of those things. And I hope that everybody can see what is going on and that you all, as representatives of all those people who wrote in and our town, can see that, you know, we are very concerned of which way this is going. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no additional requests.
Thank you, in which case I will close public comment. I propose to start off by saying the following. I support the exploration of energy efficiency measures that we as a city control. I am highly skeptical, like many residents, of bans on gas appliances to achieve those energy efficient standards. And I would be in favor of some restriction on what sort of research would be conducted on what options are before our city. One of the callers raised a number of excellent questions, which supports why we are considering this grant. This grant would provide staff assistants to be able to research fiscal implications of the different options that we have, carbon benefits, depending upon what the ordinance might provide, and public outreach. There's been criticism that we haven't had much public outreach. Well, part of the reason is, is because we haven't staffed, have fully staffed our environmental programs administrator position until recently. And there's a huge amount of other responsibilities for this position. That's the point of the grant, to help pay for technical expertise at the direction of our city with nothing specifically right now before us in the way of the sort of ban that has been represented here. So I would be in favor of moving forward. I think it should also be mentioned, for those that are critical of Southern California Edison, the Clean Power Alliance is an alternative. It's an alternative provider of power. Every resident, as is indicated earlier, has the option to opt out or select the level of green or, you know, natural, different sources of power in their mix. And I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. But for the reasons stated, I would be in favor of a motion, if someone would like to make it, to move forward with restrictions on what is being researched. So we don't have this sort of backlash and we attempt to work together. Councilmember Franklin?
Yes, thank you. You know, maybe I should get my glasses adjusted here. But when we talk about what is really the goal here on page 246, on the CPA template for a resolution, it says, whereas CPA desires to support community building and transportation electrification efforts in its service area through the reach code program. And then it says also then on item number 3B, CPA will provide financial awards to reach code program participants upon completion of the milestones completed. First of all, I don't think we need their money. I mean, if we're going to go ahead and explore this, let's go ahead and do it. But this just looks unseemly. The biggest benefactor of electrification in our codes is going to be the Clean Power Alliance. And they're using, I don't know, is it public money? I don't know how that money comes in to go ahead and quote-unquote, "help us." I don't think we need the help. I think we got, you know, a talented staff that if we want to look at ways for efficiency and unbiased and clear solutions, you know, moving forward to save energy, which by the way, gas, you know, it takes a lot less, what's the unit of measure? A lot less units of measure to, or measure of energy to dry clothes in a gas dryer than it does in an electric dryer. And we saw that ourselves when we did a remodel, a modest remodel, in 2019 and put in an electric dryer, replacing a gas dryer. And our electricity costs went up 25%. And nothing much else had changed in our home. That's because it's less efficient. Same thing with water heater as well. Gas does a lot better job, more effective. And here from a gas industry expert, you know, going through a Mr. Harger and, you know, just showing the financial benefits of gas. Now, we're in the midst of wanting to have affordable housing. Well, when you go in and buy a house, one of the things you got to look at are your expenses. And that will determine the size of the home, if you can even buy a home, along with the mortgage, the interest, and the cost to operate that home. And electricity is far more expensive. I went to the CDC because I was concerned about what it was said, that having gas appliances is unhealthy in the home. Absolutely nothing in there from the CDC. It was said, as long as you provide proper ventilation. And then our codes require that you have proper ventilation. So in terms of this being unbiased, I don't think it is. In terms of it being needed, I don't think it is. I'm not sure how this made us to the agenda because I don't remember coming up in a future agenda item. I guess typically, community development would do this, city manager?
There's an opportunity for a grant. And as a courtesy, we brought that forward to the council to consider whether or not staff should pursue it.
Okay. So another thing that concerns me is the stagnant growth of the Clean Power Alliance. You know, there were 31 cities that were in it. I don't know if we were the 31st or the 32nd, you know, back in 2020. So they had pretty good growth in beginning. But they've only added four cities in four years, almost five years. You know, you know, there's, in their area of operation, there's close to 100 different cities. So I don't know what they're seeing and what they're hearing from other cities. But they don't have to put their thumb on the scale. If it's a good solution, it's going to be a good solution. I don't think we need their money. If you want to pursue this, if we want to pursue this as a council, my recommendation as a friendly amendment would be to not take this money and to do it on our own. But I'm against it anyway.
Councilmember Ternay?
Thank you. So I think, you know, the question at hand for me is whether we take this grant money to explore options that are available to make us more sustainable. I think there is a lot of speculation about what's, you know, what could happen, what the motivations are. At the end of the day, we get to decide. We get to decide where to focus our attention on. For me personally, it wouldn't be in removing gas appliances. I have a gas stove. That's not an area that I would direct staff to pursue. It would be more on, you know, there are many other things that they can do with this grant that I think would be beneficial and that I think we could come to a consensus on. And I want to reassure our residents who've expressed concern about the elimination, the banning of gas appliances is we hear you and we will direct staff accordingly.
Thank you. Councilmember Shree?
Thank you. I'll be really quick. Just going back to the California building code standards in 2022 and understanding that they're coming, new ones are coming in July. You know, I kind of want to see a wait-and-see approach of, you know, what kind of green, enhanced green initiatives that there will be in the 2025, you know, building standard codes. We won't know that until the summer. But I kind of want to take a wait-and-see approach, but that's just my two cents.
Got it. I want to give the mayor a chance to speak, but I just wanted to confirm one question with staff, if I may, Mayor. And that is, this grant is for a set period of time, and I believe we have a deadline by which to act. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
But we don't have a deadline by which, by when we need to act in terms of on the recommendations or any research that's provided? Is that right?
So the CPA, Clean Power Alliance, is accepting participants to enroll in this program up until February 18th. They have expressed that they will wait until the 2025 codes come out and that the research that they conduct and we work on together will be tailored to those requirements and enhancing them. And I believe that their funding might be available, I believe, for their resources for two years through this program to get us through that process. And grant money would not be awarded until after an ordinance is presented to council.
Okay. Just as a courtesy, did you have any follow-up or may call on them?
No.
Mayor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Yeah, I would support the recommendation to execute an agreement and to participate in this grant funding opportunity to explore. I'm really laughing, you can see. I'm supportive of this. Okay. And I'll tell you why. Gosh, there's been so many things said, and I know I don't have to react to every single thing. And it's really okay if we have, you know, differing opinions about how to approach, whether it's the impacts of climate change, the cost of energy, or what. But I will say this, one thing that, you know, we, those who don't like Clean Power Alliance talk about it as if it's, it's just trying to make money, you know, it's going to be biased about electricity, you know. They, they don't exist to make a profit. The more capacity that they get, the more we can control our rates that consumers pay. Unlike maybe Edison, who, you know, if they raise their rates and if they put the thumb on the scale, so to speak, their shareholders benefit. You know, they are investing in communities, they are investing in generation and storage. They don't want to explode in growth, to the comment that there's only been four new cities, I think, in the last few years. That's actually smart growth because they want to be able to supply all those customers. And, you know, they're looking at ways to build capacity in-state. They're looking at ways to diversify the portfolio of how they provide it. Another thing that has been said a couple of times, I actually am no longer on the board. When I became mayor, I appointed David in the position that I held. But, you know, we don't get paid for going to Clean Power Alliance board meetings. We, it's a joint powers authority. So we are board members of the Clean Power Alliance, representing the residents and consumers in Manhattan Beach. So I really don't see, and we're fully transparent about it. I don't see an issue with that. And I just, I take a little bit of exception to that. So as Brittany mentioned, there's, it's not just things to increase electrical use. I think Councilmember Shree, I think, mentioned earlier some, at some point about, I might, again, I might not be remembering correctly, how we shouldn't just rely on electricity, I think. And I think that's right. I think we need a diversity of power sources. And like Councilmember Ternay, I have a gas stove, and I don't want to go and rip out gas stoves. To the language of encouraging electrification, okay. But we don't have to approve that, you know? And as Councilwoman Ternay said, we get to look at this. And maybe we will look at efforts to do double-pane windows or weatherization and, you know, heat pumps or even, you know, other things. So I, you know, I'm always surprised, I'm always a little upset that we just attacked this CPA as this outside entity that's coming in. We control it. And so, but I do want to support this because having the options to discuss and having information about it is important. I'm so glad that Brittany clarified that they will be taking in to consideration the codes that are going to be decided upon in July. That was an excellent question. So I, if I was there, I would press my button to make a motion to participate.
Please help us. This is what the city clerk is here to do. And she is just helping you do- This is what the city clerk is here to do, and she is just helping you do so.
Just, oh, she did? Okay, so I've made the motion.
Let's get the motion.
I know, and I, I did ramble on a bit, again, cold medicine. But my motion is to approve participation in Clean Power Alliance as a reach code program for building and transportation electrification and grant funding opportunity and to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement. And then we'll get some information, we'll come back, and I don't want to ban gas stoves, gas water heaters.
Great. There is now a motion that has been made by Mayor Hoerth with a second by Councilmember Tarnay, but Councilmember Franklin, you would like to speak before we vote, is that right?
Sure, yes. You know, with regards to the fact that, uh, you know, Clean Power Alliance is in this for, you know, uh, these great reasons, and they are, okay? I can, we're signed up, okay? My wife and I. And the reason being is that the numbers did not work out for us to put solar, you know, we're empty nester, so we're not using that much electricity. And so it just didn't work out for us for a 20-year return to go ahead and do it, you know, to go ahead and put in solar. So this allowed us to at least say we're using clean energy. Supposedly, I mean, you know, they don't track the electrons that go into your home from an actual solar panel and, you know, they're, they're, I, I believe that there's, and you could tell me, you and, uh, Mayor Hoerth, you know, it's more of an accounting thing, right? They're buying contracts and then Edison delivers. But, you know, they're not, uh, you know, they're a business, okay? Here's the, they're transparent, uh, California. Here's their total pay and compensation. Here's the first top five executives. $464,000. $449,000. $448,000. $430,000. And $425,000. To me, it just, I don't know why we need their money when it's stated in their agreement. I, I, you know, if, if we want to see how this works best for Manhattan Beach, then let's get these third parties out of it and go ahead and just do it ourselves. And we can go ahead and, and, uh, verify it on its merits, on what is appropriate for us, uh, what's not going to be thrown out by a court decision later on. So I'm all for exploring this, okay? My objection, and I think the, is, is that, you know, who benefits from the electrification? This is the second time electrification has come to this council. The first time we voted it down as well, okay? And we can actually vote it down this time. But to accept their money, uh, you know, we're all trying to cut corners, but I would rather just truly have, uh, the money out of the deal. And let's go ahead and take a look at it. I mean, if we would do it when the, uh, when the codes come out, then let's do it when the codes come out. We don't have to be on, you know, we're rushing toward, forward into this because of a grant. You know, it's going to expire in a few weeks. We don't need that money. We need to look at this with selfishly with our residents in mind. So I would entertain that we, as a friendly amendment, is that we do not accept the stipend or the grant, uh, which is explicitly, they've explicitly stated what they want to see, that we get, the milestones of us getting the grant spell out that we have reach codes that support electrification.
Okay. Let me confirm where we are.
Not accepted.
No.
So there was a mo, a friendly amendment proposed, and the maker of the motion has declined it. In which case, Councilmember Tarnay, did you want to make some comments before we proceed to a vote?
Yes, I just wanted to address the, the, the money, um, issue, just to, to understand how much staff time would it take to, to achieve what we could do with, under this grant, right? So it wouldn't be without cost to our city if we were to forego the grant, um, to the, to have the additional time dedicated to find these alternative, um, methods of, of reducing usage.
Yes, so the participation in the program and the grant funds are separate. We're eligible for receiving grant funds by participating, but we don't have to receive them. Because we are a member of the Clean Power Alliance, we receive the technical assistance to explore these opportunities by opting into this program without any obligations, without any monetary commitments or anything. And we don't have to request the grant money at the end of it either. I think you had another question in that as well.
No, I just had a comment on the, the second half, but thank you for that.
Any comment before we call, I call for the question?
Yeah, just a really quick comment, because I, I do understand that there is this, this question of who benefits, what's the motivation? I think there's two sides to that coin, you know? If Edison benefits, then the gas company benefits less. If the gas company benefits, then Edison benefits less. So I, I think, you know, I'm not advocating for either of those, those companies. I just want to see what is best for our city and to explore options. And again, the control belongs to us at the end. And once it's presented to us is when we get the money, but we can reject anything that, first of all, we get to lead the discussion, the exploration. Second of all, we are the ultimate decider. So for that reason, I would support it.
Well said.
Well said. I concur with Councilmember Tarnay. Would you like any further comments, Councilmember? In which case I call for the question.
Councilmember Shurilian?
No.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
No.
Mayor Protem Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Hoerth?
Yes.
Motion passes three to two.
All right, colleagues, we have members of the public who've been here since six o'clock waiting on the next two items. But my question is, do you want to keep rolling or do you need a brief break before we go on to the next two items? Is there a request by anyone for a break?
Keep rolling.
Keep rolling? All right, Hoerth?
Yeah, I'm, I, let's, I will keep rolling, you know, I, I have to accuse myself for the, not this item, but the item after that, so then I will probably just be done. But let's, uh, you guys can keep rolling, I'll take a quick break.
Great. Let's move on then to item number 14, the discussion of existing rear yard setback regulations for accessory structures in single-family residential zones.
Good evening again. Ryan Heiss, Acting Community Development Director. I'm here to present Associate Planner Marcela Guion to do the presentation for this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. Tonight, we will be discussing rear yard setback regulations for accessory structures in the single-family residential zones. So for a bit of background, on June 18th, 2024, City Council requested provisions allowing zero setbacks for accessory structures in the rear yard of single-family residential properties to be discussed at a future meeting. So the governing regulation which pertains to the request is located in the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code or MBMC, Section 10.52050D, accessory structures in relation to property lines. Essentially, this provision permits accessory structures with a zero-foot setback along a rear or interior side property line or not less than three feet from said property lines. This ensures the structure is either built at a zero-foot setback or provides a three-foot setback clearance to allow for adequate access around the perimeter of the structure. So the diagram depicted on this slide shows an example of how setbacks impact the design of a structure. The property lines are represented as a hatch black line. The required setbacks are hatched in red, and the structure is located within the required setbacks. The purpose of the setbacks are to reduce the visual impact of building bulk and mass, to encourage open space between structures to allow for light and air, and to ensure adequate space for access. As many of the lots in this city are small, the intention behind a zero-foot rear and side setback for accessory structures was to maximize private open space for light, privacy, and enjoyment on these lots. So staff conducted, um, research on the origin of the zero-foot side and rear setback provision and found that since at least 1958, a zero-foot accessory structure setback has been in place. This also includes setbacks for rear alley access detached garages and building separation. And then between 1976 and 1993, um, there were four minor amendments, um, that were made to clarify these provisions. So next.
Clarify that, Marcel? I'm sorry for interrupting you, but can you go back to that slide? So since at least 1958, there have been codes requiring a setback, correct? Or have there been zero setback accessories placed on property lines?
Both. So in 1958, the original zoning, uh, kind of similar to what we have today, was in 1958. And so there were provisions on setbacks for primary structures as well as these provisions for accessory structures, which include some of the provisions for the zero-foot setbacks.
Thank you. Sorry.
So next, we'll be taking a look at some of the existing development patterns across the city. Accessory structures on the side and/or rear property lines are common throughout the city. Staff observes that most reviewed accessory structures with zero-foot setbacks include pool cabanas, guest houses, and enclosures related to pool equipment. The city processes several dozen accessory structures each year, in which roughly half of them utilize the zero-to-three-foot side and/or rear setback provisions as part of a new residential build or substantial remodel. This aerial image is located on the 1600 block along Matthews Avenue and Nelson Avenue in Area District One. As you can see, the yellow stars indicate a high concentration of accessory structures located along a rear and/or side property line. It's also important to note that accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, are subject to differing development standards that are prescribed in MBMC Section 10.74. So as we take a look at Area District One and Two, the city is made up of various neighborhoods and lot sizes. These districts are typically comprised of a higher concentration of accessory structures with zero setbacks because the lots are typically larger and can accommodate both a primary residence as well as an accessory structure. The diagram before you shows the side and rear property lines represented by the black hatch line, the required setback for the primary residence as shown by the hatched red line. And then based on the MBMC 10.52050, which we reviewed in an earlier slide, accessory structures must also observe zero or three-foot side and/or rear side setback to comply with the provision. In addition, all structures must also comply with a 10-foot building separation, which the diagram also shows. So taking a look at Area Districts Three and Four, they're primarily characterized by smaller lots, which often abut walk streets and alleys. It's common for older developments to have a detached garage setback off an alley. However, newer developments tend to propose attached garages in order to maximize space. This diagram shows a scenario where a detached garage is located off of an alley. So there is a requirement for a 15-foot setback taken from an alley center line to a garage that has been in place since 1958. Based on this provision, detached garages off an alley are typically set back between five and seven and a half feet from the rear property line, as most alley widths range from 15 to 20 feet. Although a detached garage may not have a zero-foot, uh, rear setback to comply because of the 15-foot center, sorry, setback to center line for the alley, it may be located at a zero or three, uh, foot from the side property line, as shown in the scenario above. So accessory structures on rear and side property lines are common in single-family residential zones throughout the city. If the city, or sorry, if the zero-foot setback provision for accessory structures is eliminated, it would create a significant number of non-conforming properties. When a structure becomes non-conforming, it may limit future changes or expansions, including requiring a minor exception in certain circumstances, which may create limitations on the buildable floor area or require review of project valuation. Ultimately, non-conforming properties have less flexibility to maximize layout and use of a property. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council discuss and provide direction on the matter. Thank you.
Any council member questions? I will simply share for some who might be wondering, why are we considering this? That residents contacted council members last summer related to an increasing confluence of accessory dwelling unit, excuse me, of auxiliary structures right on the property line. And the larger policy issues, you have more of these, um, structures back to back on multiple pro, um, properties of ever-altering scale. It's not just an aesthetic issue. It's, raises concerns of access, emergency response, and air, I mean, multiple issues, which is why I believe this item is on the agenda tonight. Just to confirm, because, particularly because this would render properties which have these structures on the property line legal non-conforming, which could raise all kinds of challenges, this, the council could direct that this item be referred to the Planning Commission for further study, correct?
That's correct.
I think that's a self-answering question. Any other questions? Anybody have?
No, I had, I had, I had one quick one. Just for the public outreach, um, it says an interested party who had reached out to the city has been notified. So it was just one interested party, like, or?
I believe it was the concerned party who may have raised the initial request to review the item.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Any other questions? Mayor Hoerth? All right. If not, are there any comments from the public in the council chamber on this item? If you are interested in speaking, please feel free to come down closer to the microphone. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, sorry to keep you up so late with my comments. In the presentations, I, I'm going to echo your comments, Mayor Protem, is I think it's important to specify the reasons and the purpose of the setback so everybody really gets those emphasized. Having built three, four homes in Hermosin, Manhattan Beach, you know, I appreciate the reasons, and, and I, I think we have the fire department here that, and the police department could talk to it. The minimum three feet is for your safety access, and particularly so our firemen can get in there if there's an emergency and an issue. And that's something that, you know, I think we all need to respect, and we have to continue doing, okay? In the alley, it's also for safety because you need that setback so when you're pulling out, you can see if a car's coming and you won't have an accident. So we cannot lose those requirements for the existing ones, you know, they're, they're grandfathered in, but I think we need to maintain these setbacks.
Please feel free to come down.
My name's Bob Waldron. I live in Pointcetta Avenue. We have a project behind us, uh, on Anderson. The Pointcetta streets are all a little bit higher than the Anderson streets, so there is a retaining wall that's been built at the time the houses were built. It pretty much runs from, uh, Sixth Street to Eighth Street, and we are no different. So we have a retaining wall, um, which now has a 50-foot wide, 25-foot high garage attached. Actually, it didn't attach to it, they destroyed the retaining wall in order to get the zero lot line as much as they could. So somehow, the, the survey said that this wall, um, which has been there for 50 years. So somehow, the survey said that this wall, which has been there for 50 years, belonged entirely to one property. And I argued that there was a prescriptive easement, and it shouldn't belong to either one of us to be able to demolish. But the city gave a demolition permit, the building was built, and in the process, the retaining wall was removed, and now our yard is right next to this garage, which effectively is kind of like a condo situation. Their wall and my wall are the same, and there's no CCNRs, there's no issues or discussion of access maintenance. We've had contractors finish the project by coming through our property. The fire department will probably have to come through our property to put out a fire. And this 50-foot, 25-foot-high structure is within inches of two wooden fences. So having seen just what happened up in the Palisades, two fires somewhere are going to go into our house.
Good evening. My name is Tom Hillis. I am Wally's neighbor, right next door. My wife and I are currently experiencing a zero-setback construction project at 701 Anderson Street at the back of our property. Our next-door neighbors, Wally, and our property border the property behind us, which is 50 feet wide. Based on our experience thus far in a year and a half, we believe the city cannot continue to approve zero-setback construction projects, knowing that the builder will affect neighboring properties in many ways, and I have some examples for you. These are not by any means all of them. The city approved the removal of an existing 50-foot concrete block retaining wall, which Wally just talked about, which is 50 years old, shared by all three of our parties. At the start of the project, the builder told us that the existing wall was 100% on the Anderson property, which proved to be not true. In addition, the wall fits the description of a prescriptive easement, which means its removal should have been required, should have required our approval. Secondly, with the city's approval of the zero setback in the backyard, the builder imposed on our property by damaging our redwood fence, which was up against that wall, while removing the block wall, and constructing permanent shoring at the property line, which caused soil erosion to our property during the heavy rainstorms last year, and the eventual removal of our redwood fence due to the concrete footings no longer being buried. They were just hanging in the air. Third one, the city originally approved stucco to be used on the back wall. This was changed to siding six months later. We believe stuccoing the wall could not have been accomplished without the use of our yard, as was the case when the siding was installed. Please note that the siding was first staged in our backyard for six months by the contractor in our yard, then built, saw cut, sanded, installed, and finally painted by various subcontractors, all requiring access, time, and space in our backyard. Summarized, we do not believe the structure built with zero setback can be built, installed with various finishes, or maintained in the future without access to and imposing on neighboring yards. It is not the neighbor's responsibility to provide this.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in council chamber wish to address the item? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay. In which case, I will close. Public comment on this item? Councilmember Sherwin?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank again all of you that stayed, Tom and Wally and your families here for the four hours duration. Thank you for your patience and your input. I'm all about the safety access and the minimum three feet. I mean, that's no doubt about it after everything we've seen happen here in the near term. But I'm also open to what Mayor Protem said, which is potentially having the Planning Commission take a look at this. I would definitely approve, yeah, second motion.
Unless anyone else wants to speak, I'm happy to make a motion just to keep our meeting going and get something to talk about. I see that a second and a motion would be to refer this to the Planning Commission to explore the impacts of the zero setback requirement, provide, explore examples, get a little bit more of the examples than is present in this current staff report, and understand what our options are and what the implications are of the legal nonconforming designation of determining that there, that this type of property that exists, has been built, would be legal nonconforming. Is that still something you would say?
It is 100%. I would like to, you know, kind of start the process as quickly as possible.
Great.
Should there be something in there also about-
Please, Councilmember Franklin.
Yes, about unilateral? I mean, if just one person wants to do it, how does that impact the other one? Do they then have to, you know, make a three-foot setback?
I believe that's a friendly amendment. Does staff understand what council members requesting? Can you clarify that a little bit further? Because I'm receptive to including what you want to study.
Yeah, you know, so you have a prescriptive easement, so both, there's accessory units or, what are we referring them to?
Yeah, ADUs. You got it.
Well, but it doesn't have to be with people in it, but, you know, whatever, on each side, but one side decides to go ahead and redevelop, does that require then the other side to push back the boundary wall three feet into their property line as well?
So it does not currently.
Yeah, so to have the Commission explore that as well.
If that's a friendly amendment, if staff follows it, I-
So typically, we only control what individuals can build on their own lot, each individually. So you wouldn't typically have what was built on somebody's other, across the park line affect what you can build on your property. So the distances, property line are typically measured exactly from that way, from the park line, each direction.
It's one code requirement, and it's applied unilaterally to all properties.
Right. That's part of the challenge, I think, these residents are facing. So with that, any further comment before we call for questions? Hearing none? We have a vote.
Okay. Mayor Howard?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Yes.
Councilmember Tornay?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. It's brought to my attention that we are likely to run past 10:30, and there may need to be a motion to continue, although we're going to try and expedite this next matter. We may still need a motion to continue beyond. So I see a motion has been made by Councilmember Sherillian, with a second by Councilmember Franklin. Do we have a vote to continue?
Before you take the vote, Mr. Mayor Protem, I don't think it's right for me to vote in this, because I'm going to be recusing myself from the next item, which is going to be, I think, long enough. So, do you know what I mean? I don't feel, I know you need four votes, though, to extend it, right?
No, just a majority. And just to make it clear-
Oh, okay.
Make it clear, the meeting would end at 11 o'clock, unless there's a motion at 10:30 to go past 11.
And that's what this, that's what this motion would be, correct?
That's fine. Let's do it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
If that's the case, I'll call for the question. Let's vote.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Tornay?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Howard?
Of St.?
Motion passes 4-0-1.
In which case, thank you, council members, we'll move forward. Thank you to those members of the public that have remained in the audience since 6 o'clock for this item. We will now move on to item number 15, which is consideration of the Parking and Public Improvements Commission recommendation to approve initial calming measures on, or for Valley Drive and Ardmore Avenue between First Street and 10th Place.
And just for the record-
And I do have, yeah.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Mayor Howard, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do, regrettably, not because I'm tired, but I do need to recuse myself from this item, because I live within 1,000 feet of many of the suggested measures. So I do not get to opine on this, so no matter where this came on the agenda, I would be recusing myself. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Acting Director Heiss.
Excellent. Thank you for the intro, Mayor Protem Lesser. I will be retiring my tie after this one, but thank you all, council members. I'd like to introduce Eric Zandvliet to give the presentation on this.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, and members, oh, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. My name is Eric Zandvliet, the City Traffic Engineer. I will make this as brief as possible, and we will not be using a PowerPoint presentation for this. This item came to us through a matter of discussions with neighbors in the Valley Drive area, beginning in 2022, regarding speeding and people failing to make the stop sign at, or failing to stop at the stop sign at Valley Drive and Sixth Street and Sixth Place. We gathered some information together. The city presented or started doing a three-eas approach, engineering, enforcement, and education approach to trying to address this, including several different measures, including painting stop legends, repainting stop legends at Sixth Street, enlarging the stop bar, enlarging the stop signs, ongoing enforcement efforts with the patrol officers, adding a changeable message sign at the intersection to encourage people to make the full and complete stop. We were directed to look at this further, and we conducted a study. We notified all the neighbors in the neighborhood with a written notice to come to the PPIC meeting in December of last year. We presented the findings, and we also suggested some initial traffic calming measures. In 2020, or sorry, in 2002, the city adopted a neighborhood traffic calming or neighborhood traffic management program. That's an iterative process, where we start with a certain matter of, a certain number of initial measures. We get a buy-in, and we have, we make sure that there's support from the residents to do this before we move on. This was done in December, as I mentioned, at the, at the PPIC meeting, which we notified all the neighbors again for this meeting tonight. So there's been two chances at the, bite at the apple here for our residents. The, when we looked at phase one or stage one and stage two measures, there are a number of initial calming measures that we are recommending, and I'll go through them in the recommendations. The PPIC supported the recommendations and also added another one, including a flashing stop sign on the Ardmore Avenue at Sixth Street approach, similar to the recommendation for the, for Valley Drive. Valley Drive is a residential collector street. It carries about 5,900 cars per day on it with a speed limit of 30 miles an hour. The prevailing, or the average speed is about 33 or 34 miles an hour, and the 85th percentile speed, which is considered the critical speed, the safe, the upper safe speed of that, of that street, is 38 or 39 miles an hour. That's above what we would expect for that kind of street. So we do want to implement some kind of initial measures. Specifically, the recommendations from the PPIC and staff are, one, to install a speed limit sign on Valley Drive south of 10th Place. There's no speed limit sign on that approach. There is one farther south, about Sixth Street or so. Install a solar-powered flashing stop sign on Valley Drive at Sixth Place. That stop sign, I recall a previous speaker mentioning whether or not it should be on the, on the parkway side of the street or the, or the home side of the street. It can go on either side, that's fine, and it dims at night, so it's not obstructive to residents at night. Third is to install a capital project to construct sidewalks and crosswalks on the north side of Sixth Street between Valley and Ardmore. That would have, be a combination of sidewalks to connect the far easterly side of Ardmore Avenue with the far westerly side of Valley Drive. We can't put in and paint crosswalks without having someplace for the people to walk and stay when they're waiting to cross. And so that, that's why we were suggesting both of those at the same time. At Sixth Street or Sixth Place, the street is wide enough, you don't have to encroach into the parkway in order to create those sidewalks. The sidewalks would also likely have some type of bulbout that are, is a place for people to wait to cross, and it also helps calm traffic at the intersection, because it reduces the, the expanses of the side, of the intersection, and shortens the crosswalk length. Similarly, another calming measure would be to initiate a capital project to construct crosswalks, accessible ramps on Valley Drive and Ardmore, crossing at 10th Street. So 10th Street is a walk street on the Valley side, it's a regular street on the east side, but it also would help connect the exercise area and the parkway itself to homes on both sides of Valley Ardmore. Fifth would be to install a solar-powered speed awareness sign on Valley Drive between Sixth Place and First Street somewhere, so that's, that's second segment to the south, to help moderate, to help remind drivers to keep their speeds down. And then number six is to paint a wide parking edge line along the west side of Valley Drive between 10th Place and Second Street. We've done that very successfully on other segments of Valley Drive and helped slow down traffic on that street, because it actually visually narrows down the width of the, of the lane. It also provides a buffer for those cars that are parked along Valley Drive, so they don't get their mirrors hit and things like that as people go by. Again, with reference to a previous speaker, it's, we're not designating parking spaces, we're not removing any parking spaces, we're not changing any parking spaces, it's just a line along the parking row to reduce the visual width of the, of the lane on, on Valley Drive. And number seven, to install a solar-powered stop sign on the Ardmore Avenue northbound approach at Sixth Street. These recommendations, the recommendations for the sidewalks and crosswalks would go into our capital, capital improvements program and be discussed at that time with regard to priorities, funding, all the rest of that, but this recommendation here is to initiate it in, in our CIP. There's just an initial cost, approximate cost of $500,000 for both of those, because of all of the, all of the concrete work that has to be done for that. The other measures, all of the other measures could, are, can be handled with existing budgets through our, our street maintenance funds for that, and that's about $20,000. With that, I will stop. I have a sketch up here of the locations for those seven measures, eight measures, seven measures, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember Franklin.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Eric, for that report. Did you do any pedestrian traffic measurement? I mean, do we have an idea how many people cross?
We have observation information, but we didn't do an actual count. It does get a decent amount of traffic, of pedestrian traffic, and a lot of people walking their dogs.
Right.
Yeah.
To get to the-
To get back and forth to the, to the parkway.
Right, okay. The, how about enhanced enforcement? Is that going to be part of-
That's part of the lead-in for the recommendation, where we would be continuing enforcement efforts, both from a stop sign enforcement standpoint and from a speeding standpoint.
Okay, great. And then, I think that's it for now. Thank you. It looks like you're going.
Let me refresh my recollection, Eric, with regards to level two tools, level two tools needing to be exhausted first before we go to a level three solution, which is a crosswalk.
Crosswalks don't necessarily have to be a level three or a second measure. It can be included in the, in the level one and level twos, but to your point with level three, level threes are more, first of all, more expensive, but secondly, they have a larger chance of changing the circulation of the street. You may divert traffic down another, another street. Some of the measures might be restricting turns or reducing lanes, those kinds of things that would have an impact. Speed, speed humps are a third, a level three type of measure that we, but they have a real potential to change traffic and force traffic through the neighborhood.
This is questions, but I want to apply a greater sense of urgency to the intersection of Sixth and Valley. Seeing the videotape that a resident has put together, which shows how many cars blow through that intersection is, is really harrowing. And I asked about the level two versus level three, because a crosswalk is a level three solution, is it not, with a sidewalk?
A raised crosswalk would be not this type of crosswalk.
Okay, well, that, let me just follow up also on what a resident had expressed with regard to the concern of a flashing stop sign- to the concern of a flashing stop sign. Beyond dimming at night, there could be a shield for the immediately adjacent resident?
So I, I want to explain how that works. And so the LED lights that are around the border of the stop sign are very directional. You don't see them from the side. And so depending on how you angle the, the stop sign itself, you're not pointing it in the, in the windows of people's homes. They're dimmable at night, so it's all about the ambient light that's around it. And so we don't, we don't get complaints for the ones that we install.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Sherillian?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions to move this along and open up the public comment. I too echo, I did walk this and I too echo that if we can at some point expedite that Sixth Street, but I would like to hear some type of timeline from Director Lee when, after the public comment, just to kind of get an idea of what he's thinking. I know it's kind of tough to, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just did. But I also want to compliment Community Development and Public Works and Finance working together because you're spending five hundred thousand dollars on this and it, you know, twenty thousand is budgeted in the Public Works Fund and Public Works, and then the rest is coming from special revenues for the street. So I appreciate that strategic thinking and compliments to Finance for finding that extra five hundred thousand dollars and it won't.
Dip into general.
You won't have to dip into general fund. So that's, that's it for now.
Good point. Thank you. Any other council questions? If not, thank you. I'd like to open up this item for public comment. Members who are in council chambers first. And thank you for your patience and sitting through our long meeting this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Sixth Street for over twenty-two years. And first of all, we've got two separate issues going on right now. One issue is the fact that you have a failure to stop the stop signs, which is validated by the video. And then you have an issue of speeding. I'm here mostly to address stop signs. As being a resident, it's a really unsafe intersection. It's an artery. It's a thoroughfare. The beach community going up to Sepulveda, Sepulveda coming down to the beach community. And the problem with the stop signs is that they are not visible enough. This is a really busy pedestrian area on a multiple occasions, not only myself, but my neighbors. And the neighbors, it's a big experience of neighbors, you know, neighbors living in Fifth Street, Sixth Street, the east side, have almost been hit by cars. This is a known problem to the city and the City Council and the Police Department. The police sit in the alley, waiting to ticket drivers for failure to stop as well as speeding. And the City Council has had residents call this dangerous area to their attention repeatedly. There are the videos of people running the stop signs, yet nothing has been done to increase the safety of the residents who live in the area and who uses very busy pedestrian area. My, I'm coming to say please don't wait until someone is seriously injured or killed by this inaction. I don't know how the city would avoid being sued when they've been put on notice and they're aware of the, it's a dangerous area. I'm asking you to please install the flashing solar stop signs at Sixth and Valley and Sixth and Ardmore. They're both equally dangerous. They both don't stop. And also I wanted to add Manhattan Beach has become very popular. It's top, it's a tourist destination and we write to your drivers, do not know our streets. They're distracted looking at their apps and their maps, and they frequently are the ones that are running the stop signs. In regards to the three E's, you cannot educate people who don't live here.
Thank you.
That's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. Other members?
Try this again. Three hours later. So, Honorable Mayor Protem, first thing to note is the City Council member, I mean, meeting is not for the faint of heart. So four hours later and no dinner, I rethink my decision of coming. So, started with, I'm Tom Williams. I live at six oh nine North Alley Drive. I've been there for almost thirteen years now. I would kind of relate all this back to me having my first child five years ago and then bringing him out to the green belt. That's when I really started feeling and noticing the problems there. So before I start addressing some of the traffic calming measures that Eric had brought up, I'd like to share a few statistics. First, to understand where I'm getting my data, I built a computer vision model that basically analyzes non-stop video data to pick out violators, people that are just running through the stop sign. And as my wife would attest, this hobby has now gotten out of hand. So, but nonetheless, here I am, five hours later. So as of today, I've analyzed the past sixty-eight days worth of data and just shy of thirty thousand cars have blown through that stop sign in sixty-eight days. So, I mean, I'm just even pause to even think about that, thirty thousand cars. So I don't even address the revenue generation standpoint of that, if you just constantly ticket people. But beyond that, the average number of cars are four hundred and thirty-six cars a day, with roughly sixty-five percent of violations occurring in the afternoon. So that leads you to start profiling the type of people that are actually running the stop sign, primarily commuters coming home. The worst times are between one and three and five and seven P M. The worst day of the week is oddly enough Saturday, followed by Friday. There are a few other points worth mentioning, and I'd like to have an additional one minute if possible.
With the acceptance of the other council members, I would authorize an additional minute. If we can ask, though, that you would maybe focus on the specific measures that are being recommended tonight.
Drilling down to it. So a couple of other things that are worth mentioning, which addresses the specific measures. This section between Manhattan Beach Boulevard and First Street is the only section with two lanes of traffic in the same direction, an entire length of Valley and Ardmore. So bear that in mind when you think about painting lines, et cetera. It has more impact on other sections because those roads are different, those sections of road are different. The first speed limit sign, as Eric has mentioned, for Valley from coming off of Manhattan Beach Boulevard is at Sixth Street. So for over a decade, no one knows how fast they're supposed to go until they get past Sixth Street. There's zero crosswalks on Manhattan Beach Boulevard between First and Valley, excuse me, between Manhattan, Manhattan Beach Boulevard and First, on Valley and Ardmore. And between Manhattan Beach Boulevard and PCH on Ardmore and Valley, there are eight crosswalks. Between Manhattan Beach Boulevard and First Street on Highland, there are twelve crosswalks. There's zero between Manhattan Beach Boulevard and First Street. Now for the recommendations, it is the intent of, if the recommendations are the intent of doing traffic calming measures is to reduce the speed of traffic on Valley, then I agree with most of them. However, I should note that an additional goal is to encourage compliance of the stop sign at Sixth and Valley. I do not agree with the flashing stop sign being put in without any reference data to measure its actual effectiveness. Witness, witness these drivers every day, knowing that blowing through the stop sign is a problem, they do so willingly.
Mr. Williams, I'm so sorry. We've given you an additional minute. You've sat through this entire meeting and moreover, you've provided important comment, both the Parking and Public Improvement Commission and now to us, but we do need to move on to the other items because we have a time clock for this meeting that's going to come to an end.
So I'll send an email as a follow-up, but I think I've been talking about this for three years and there's been zero impactful action taken by the city. And as the previous speaker has spoken about, everyone's been put on notice, not just this council, but all of us are responsible for this.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Let's see if we can address some of those issues. Anybody else on, in council chambers that wishes to talk, discuss this item? If, if not, is there's anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on this matter?
No request on Zoom.
In which case I'll close public comment. Council members, any questions or comments so that we can move this item forward? Councilmember Franklin?
Yes, I've spent, I met Mr. Williams before and spent time with him and inadvertently helped fix a pothole there. And he got very upset. He said that was the only thing that was slowing down the cars, was the pothole. So it is a, just an impacted area. And I would just second, you know, and, you know, the sentiments before is just get that crosswalk in there as soon as possible for it.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Yeah, and, you know, again, I appreciate the PPIC reviewing this and the public outreach and getting input from everyone around that area to, to be able to mitigate the speed and the stop signs and all the violations. I think, I mean, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion on, on the PPIC recommendations, but
I already made a motion.
You already motioned?
I'm happy to withdraw.
No, 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 go for it. I didn't, I didn't see it. But I, I do, again, want to emphasize that we get something up and running. I know there's a lot of moving parts here and this could take a long time to possibly program into the CIP with other competing priorities, but again, just focus on at least the Sixth Streeting, that, that's it.
Okay. The intersection has been on my routes in my neighborhood for most of the, almost thirty years that I've lived in Manhattan Beach, and I have watched particularly raising children and walking past that intersection, the issues that have been brought to our attention by the residents. I want to move with deliberate speed. I understand that there's a bifurcation here with regard to the need for a capital improvement project to be able to build the sidewalk that's required. Also, there is a tree right on the south side of Veterans Parkway at Sixth Street, right on the curb. So as a result, there'd need to be an extension to be able to accommodate a sidewalk, but I want to do whatever we need to do with this motion to be able to accelerate the evaluation of the sidewalk and crosswalk on Valley and then explore the possibility on Ardmore as well at Six. But more importantly, the motion would be to adopt the recommendations of the Parking and Public Improvement Commission. What other comments would council members or other additional measures would council members like? Anything else? I think my comment to the one speaker about the questioning of the stop sign with blinking lights is it's a acceleration. It's moving through our toolbox to add additional measures. It can be done relatively quickly and it can hopefully help delineate that intersection better. So is there any further comment, the council members?
Maybe the enhanced enforcement, you know, because I know that did have some impact somehow, a regular schedule or, you know, just something to let the police presence know, you know, be known. I'm not talking about the lighted sign.
I'm hesitating only because I know there are limitations on staffing with the police department and I know that there has been enforcement, but obviously it's not scheduled because they don't want to notify drivers when there's going to be an officer there. But certainly it has been an issue that I think the police department has heard and has monitored. So with that, is there just any other question, comments? I will call for the question. Let me vote, please.
Honorable Mayor Protem, since Mayor is not present, you could use your voting system.
There's a motion and a second by Councilmember Franklin. Call for the question.
Oh, we can just do, I'm sorry. I was waiting for the, the voice.
Motion passes four zero one.
Okay. We have fifteen minutes left before we turn into Pumpkin. So I'm going to try and expedite moving forward. The next item is under council requests and reports, including AB twelve thirty-four reports. Item number seventeen is the item for council members to provide their AB twelve thirty-four reports. I'll start with mine, which is that I was at the League of California Cities Mayor and City Council Academy this last week, where I conducted my required AB sixteen sixty-one training, which regards harassment training that's required for local elected officials, and attended an very interesting session on social media, what elected officials can and cannot do as a matter of law and what are best practices. It was an interesting session. I was glad I was able to attend. Councilmember Sherillian?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I too want to mention a few things, AB sixteen sixty-one as well as AB twelve thirty-four. I did take that training this past week and part of the League of Cities Academy.
Great. Councilmember Tarnay?
Yes, and I was at the same conference, so thank you.
I was at the beach.
Thank you for that disclosure. Moving on to item number seventeen, a consideration of a request by Councilmember Franklin and Mayor Hoard to place on a future agenda item of discussion regarding emergency shelter solutions in the city. Mr. City Attorney, what's sought here is simply a third vote?
Yes.
I'll be a third.
Is there a third vote to put this on a future agenda?
Councilmember Sherillian. Next is item number eighteen, consideration of request by Mayor Hoard and Mayor Protem Lesser to place on a future agenda item of discussion regarding selection process for the city's board and commission seats. Again, looking for a third.
Third vote.
Tom.
Councilmember Tarnay will provide that. Next is item number M, future agenda items, and I have one. It is a request, an updated report for the new council to review prosecution services for the city of Manhattan Beach, including options for supplementation. Is there a second vote to consider that?
A second.
Yeah.
Just as previously discussed by the council at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, you don't have to go through a three-step process. We can come back with a report. At that time, the council members, we were recommending an outside council to perform prosecution services. And I think with the election of the new DA, I think it's, we would renew that recommendation. So we'll come back with a report.
Okay. And do you need any further designation of who's seconding, thirding, and fourthing?
He was the second, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all we need for now.
Very good.
I don't know what's going on with my microphone, but once again, it's, because it's already been discussed by the council.
Does any other council member have a proposed future agenda item?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. In which case we move on to item N, the City Manager Report.
Nothing to report today, thank you.
Option O, the City Attorney Report.
Nothing tonight.
Option P is information items. I don't see there are any items there. There are nineteen agenda forecasts, information item only, commission minutes, no action required. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct.
No closed session, in which case, let me get out the script for adjournment. In which case, this meeting will be adjourned to a City Council Governance Workshop on Monday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at eight A M. in the Los Angeles County Public Library in Manhattan Beach. We stand adjourned.